Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Council Special Meeting -- excuse me, not the Special Meeting, City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Meeting of September 28th, 2015. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag like of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is, I would like to know if there's any changes to the order of the agenda? Any recommendations? All right. I'm going to recommend that we continue Item 10A to a later date. I'll find out if there is some agreement on the council for that. Okay. All right. So, we're going to continue that item, Yvette?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to note that I don't think we should continue it, but I'm fine if that's what the rest of the council wants to do.
Okay. I apologize. I got the consensus. Sorry if I ignored you. All right. The next item is Item 5, Council Communications and Announcements.
Council --
Yes, sir.
Number 4 is reported.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. It's always good to have ex-mayors on the council. Mr. Rubens, do we have any reports from closed session?
We held a closed session in the special meeting before the regular meeting, and there is no reportable action from that meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Council Communications and Announcements are brief items that members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received, and also activities that they have taken place in with related council assignments over the last few weeks. These are just informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So, let's start with Bob.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing this evening.
All right. Thank you. How about you, Matt?
We're really light down here. I've got nothing either.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just three quick items. One is I attended on behalf of the council the most recent board meeting of the South Bay Side Waste Management Authority, basically the folks who oversee the garbage and recycling collection meeting where we approved the annual budget for recology and for the South Bay Side Recycling Center. In addition, I've been having an opportunity over the last few weeks to take advantage of our new dog park, which I have to say has been pretty entertaining, although I will make an observation to my fellow San Carlin's that I've started making it a point to clean up the dog park a little bit when I leave, even when my dog hasn't contributed to the mess, mostly because it's important to keep it clean, and we're sort of all in this together, so I encourage other folks to do that as well. And lastly, just an idea I wanted to run by the council, we have a number of significant projects that are going to be breaking ground in the next, say, six months to a year, and I think it would actually be a useful exercise and a very important educational tool if we were to ask the Economic Development Authority Commission, basically, to do some work to be able to explain to residents of the community, put some materials together to explain to residents of the community and to business leaders why, in fact, development takes place. Because based on conversations I've had, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about why development takes place in any community certainly, and specifically in San Carlos. So, I'm hoping that that's an idea that we could task the commission with doing and see if that meets with the approval of the rest of the council.
Any questions or actually agreement on that?
I'd like a clarification to the last part there. If it were just a process to let people know about upcoming development, when it's going to be taking place, things to expect, parking situations and so forth, I'd be fine with it, but to get what I'd call political in explaining, you know, things about why we're doing development and so forth, I think the time has come and gone for that because those were discussions that would have taken place when those projects were being proposed, and we had those discussions, and people came and threw in on it and so forth, but I don't know. So, I'm sort of in favor, but just if it stays at the level of informing people, you know, the transit village plans to get started at this time, and this is what you can expect, and maybe there will be some traffic adjustments and so forth, that kind of thing.
Well, I would actually envision -- may I respond, Mr. Mayor? I would actually envision going beyond that. I think the bigger issue, Matt, is that despite the conversations that the council has had or prior councils have had, I think there's a fair amount of basic misunderstanding of why various things happen or don't happen in town, and a lot of that's because of an ignorance of land use law, a lot of it also is ignorance of the authority of the city in a private enterprise economy like we have. So, to me, it's an educational thing that's sort of timely at any given point in time, and is not necessarily related to a particular project. I'm just saying that because we have a number of big projects happening, it's going to be a topic of conversation. It already is, and I'd like to try and educate folks if we can.
So, how would this -- how would we present this? Would we publish something or put it on the website?
I'm actually thinking that, I mean, the actual channel and how it goes out would be up to, you know, further consideration. I think it's a matter of putting some educational materials together, and whether it's published or part of the quarterly newsletter, or put on the website, or all of the above, so that we can point people to it as a reference, basically, for people to understand better why things happen the way they do sometimes, and what the process is so that they can get involved in it in the future. That's really what I'm looking to do. It's an educational tool.
Yeah. I had a conversation with a gentleman today on Laurel Street who was wondering about Wheeler Plaza and a lot of things that we know that we thought were public knowledge, but were not public knowledge to him. So, I understand what you're saying. I think that'd probably be a pretty good idea. You know, more transparency is always better than less. Yeah.
I don't have a problem with transparency part of it, but I'm not sure if EDAC's the vehicle. They're going to be going to staff to get some of this information, it would seem, so we could just task staff with writing up a general economics, "This is how capitalism works," or something. I mean, I don't know that necessarily EDAC needs to even personally be involved with it. To me, it's a two- or three-page thing of how development, economics, and things work in a general way, or the way cities' processes work. But, I mean, that's just my thought, so.
Not to speak for Mark, but it seems like what he's saying is it's basically saying, "Here, look, this is what's coming up. Here's what we're going to do."
No, no, no. He's not saying that. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe he's saying that. Correct me if I'm wrong. He's trying to get to the -- not the project per se, or maybe the projects interspersed, but why development even occurs. Is that correct?
That's right. Both with a focus more on the latter. And to your point, Bob, there's lots of people who could write it. To me, the advantage of EDAC was that EDAC are appointed members, residents of the community, and that they would be able to filter it through a lens that would make it more consistent with the way community members look at it and have questions about it. So, that's why I was thinking of EDAC. You're right, I mean, a lot of people could write it, we could write it, but I just think EDAC is a better choice.
All right. Okay. Well?
I'll chime in with just a couple. I think we're going to be communicating to residents a lot over the next couple of years about lots of construction projects that are going to be happening, and I think it's important for us to be able to answer the question, "Why?" And that'll happen in lots of different places, whether it's in newsletters, or public forums, or online. I think having EDAC contribute to that is a fine idea.
Okay. All right. I guess we're good on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that it, Mark? Or you had more stuff?
No, I think that's probably more than enough.
Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items. I attended the Steering Committee meeting for the San Mateo County Community Choice Energy Task Force, which is still a mouthful. This is a process that's been spearheaded by the county to create an energy utility that would offer consumers in San Mateo County a choice of a greener alternative. We are going to be asked to -- likely asked to vote as to whether or not we want to join a joint powers authority called Peninsula Clean Energy sometime in the next six months. At the last meeting was a meeting that had been anticipated for a long time where the Steering Committee got to look at the technical feasibility study that examined the feasibility of creating a utility in San Mateo County. The feasibility study looked at three options. The middle option showed that it would both reduce greenhouse gas emissions by a considerable amount and save ratepayers money. So, the argument all along has been that there's a win-win opportunity whereby pooling ratepayers, we could buy green energy contracts on the market and offer consumers a greener energy alternative for cheaper. So, that seems to be what the study is suggesting. I suspect that means that it's going to be coming our way pretty soon, so I wanted to give my colleagues a heads-up on that. Lastly, I participated in the 2+2 Committee meeting with my colleague, Mr. Olbert. The 2+2 Committee is a committee of two school board members and two city council members to talk about areas of overlapping interest. A couple notes. One is that it looks like there's some momentum looking at a sports field project at Tierra Linda that the city and the school district would partner with. The staffs are going to be looking at that, and that's going to be coming back to us. I believe, Jeff, is the plan to have something come back before the end of the year?
Yeah, that's correct. In fact, I just received an email from Mr. Porter earlier today.
Great. So, that's great news. If it's completed, it would add a new athletic field, or it would substantially rehab the athletic field that's at TL, expand it, and offer a lot more recreational opportunities. We talked a bit about public transportation services in San Carlos, and subsequent to the meeting, I had an opportunity to meet with a couple private citizens, city volunteers, a woman by the name of Meredith Park, and a woman by the name of Dawn, whose last name escapes me at the moment. But, they've been working with a few other folks to explore an opportunity to create a better public transportation system in San Carlos, and they've actually had quite a bit of success. They succeeded in expanding the 295 route in San Carlos, starting just actually a couple of weeks ago, which I was not aware of. So, we now have a bus line in San Carlos called 95, which runs up San Carlos Avenue and out to Carlmont Tierra Linda, and they were able to get that through talking to SAM Trans staff, attending SAM Trans board meetings, and so I was really impressed. And they don't want to stop there. They're working to try and continue to improve this bus line so that it lines up a little bit better with the bell times at Carlmont Tierra Linda. And then, they brought to my attention the fact that San Carlos used to have a bus line that would run up Britton, across Crestview, and then down Melundy. And so, they have in mind, I think, what is a really smart idea, which is trying to revive that bus line and taking the current flex service, which everyone has acknowledged is not performing that well, and really cover the old route. And I thought it was a great idea. They had some really innovative ideas around how to use that for both seniors who want to get downtown and for students. So, I talked a bit with city staff, and I was thinking, given that we have some good city volunteers that have gotten some momentum, that we form a city council subcommittee to look at this, to bring these city volunteers in so that we could all be working together to talk to SAM Trans, SAM Trans staff, and see if we can make something happen. The reason to do this rather quickly is that Tierra Linda is likely to be under construction next year, which is going to create a further bottleneck around that intersection, and so I think the push would be to try to get this additional bus line up and running for the next school year. So, that's a long-winded way of saying I think there's a lot of good people working on this issue, and I was hoping that I could see if I could get my colleagues interested in creating a subcommittee. It's definitely something that I would like to work on.
Through the chair? Yes.
I support the idea. I think it's -- I've talked to Meredith as well. I think it's a good idea. However, I think it's also something that needs to have close association with the school district on, and so I'm honestly not sure whether that means it's best working through the 2+2, or whether we set up a subcommittee that's somehow joint with the school board, or what have you, but I like the idea.
All right. Well, I guess we would like to find out if there's any interest in anybody joining Cameron on a subcommittee unless you do want to pursue it through 2+2.
I would certainly have an interest in doing it as well, okay? But if somebody else wants to -- and again, the separate issue of the 2+2 thing, the 2+2 dimension is because I really do think it needs to involve the district somehow. Otherwise, we're going to have two different subcommittees and two different public agencies addressing the same problem.
Yeah, I totally agree. We can work through what's the best configuration, and I agree that there should be folks from the school district, and in fact, the folks that are working on it are largely school volunteers today, so. But I think the city's in a better position to be able to advocate for new bus routes.
Well, I think we've got our subcommittee then, if it's a 2U. Yeah.
I will agendize it for the next meeting so that you can formally vote and create the subcommittee.
Okay.
And I'll put in Vice Mayor Johnson and Councilmember Olbert.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Cameron. Good stuff. All right. Just a few things that I've been up to the last couple of weeks. Had a couple of meetings with members of our community. Dmitri Vandelos is here, and met with him, and also met with Ben Fuller and Sam Hertzberg. I don't see Sam, unless he's hiding. But anyway, we had Cameron and I also -- Cameron was with me when I met with Ben and Sam. We talked about a lot of things. I think it was a very productive visit. Also did my monthly Elms visit, which is a -- seems like a new tradition that was started by Mayor Olbert last year, and it's funny, when you meet with a lot of residents of the Elms, sometimes I think I learn as much as I give. They're intensely interested in what goes on in council meetings, and even though they live right across the street, obviously, most of them can't make it, so it's nice to report on those things. And also, explaining to them why we did what we did also helps remind me of why we did what we did, and it's actually a very useful exercise for me, and my hope is that Cameron will continue this new tradition when he becomes -- assuming he becomes mayor.
I will do my best, yes.
All right. Also had the opportunity to attend the ribbon-cutting of a new location for Jazzercise, which is on El Camino. It used to be a -- it's on south El Camino, southern part of El Camino, past Central, and it used to be a dog grooming business and a British foods place, if you're familiar with it. They combined the two buildings. There's now a Jazzercise studio there. It's very nice. It's got a special floor, and I attended the ribbon-cutting for that last week. Also participated in the first, the inaugural San Mateo County Affordable Housing Task Force. Many of you might be aware that with the demise of the Redevelopment Agency that a lot of -- there's been just a lot of loose ends in the county. A lot of cities want to engage in providing affordable housing for their residents, and we've all sort of been spinning our wheels. I'm a member of the Housing Endowment and Real Estate Trust, and we've also been struggling with ways to spur affordable housing on. Finally, San Mateo County Supervisors Horstley and Warren Slocum assembled this task force, which includes council members and staff members from virtually every city in the county, and the council pointed to me to that, and I attended my first meeting last month, and we're going to be meeting monthly, and hopefully, we're going to come up with some collective and collaborative ideas that will help move us forward to solving some real issues, real housing problems that we have in this county. It's not just San Carlos, it's every city in the county, and I would probably say every city in the Bay Area has these issues. And one of the reasons that we really need to develop this housing is because the jobs are here. And as Rich Gordon pointed out, if there is no housing for people, the jobs will eventually leave. We have a very unique, wonderful community here. I like to say we have the most expensive weather people can buy. At some point, industry will decide whether or not it makes sense for them to continue to be here if their own employees can't afford to live here. So, the future of our economy regionally depends on having an affordable housing and generally, a mixed and overall affordable housing program available for just about everybody. All right. Enough on that. On the same day, also, I've attended the Airport Land Use Commission, which is a very obscure commission that people probably don't know much about. I didn't know much about it until I took over for Cameron on it. A lot of mundane issues are addressed, but there's one issue in particular that is a real source of irritation, not necessarily to citizens or residents of San Carlos, but to the cities of the south, or to the south of us, Redwood City, Woodside, Portola Valley, Menlo Park, Fair Oaks. A lot of those towns have Surf Air flying over them on their approach to our airport, and some people on the east side hear that as well. What I learned from Gretchen Kelly, who is the manager of San Carlos Airport, is that there are other airlines who have been flying into our airport in San Carlos for a long time using the same aircraft that Surf Air flies, but they've learned over the years to take different routes, and she said that they're now beginning to work with Surf Air to get their pilots to use these alternate routes. Apparently, what they're doing now, because a lot of them come from major airlines, they're using what they call the GPS routes, which are the established approach patterns, and those established approach patterns go over a lot of people's homes. So, what they're trying to do is educate them to use different approach patterns that are less intrusive on neighborhoods. And I think -- and that's it. So, all right. Are there any comments by staff?
No comments this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. Moving along, the next section is public comment. And hang on just a -- and we have some public comment cards. Let me just, for those of you who may not have been here before, just explain how public comment works. Persons wishing to address the council on matters not on the post-agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. You'll see a timer up there with green, yellow, and red lights, and the yellow comes on when you've got about 20 seconds left. If an item you're speaking on is not on the agenda, please be advised that the city council may only briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have the matter placed on a future city council agenda for more comprehensive action, or report in formal public discussion and input at that time.
This is a 10A. These are all public comments.
Oh, and that's -- okay.
This is a 10A.
Right. Right. I will -- maybe I should just deal with this one first. Mary Farrell, are you here?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to let you know, we have continued Item A to a future meeting, so we're not going to be addressing it tonight. Okay? You're welcome to stay if you like. Okay. First speaker I have for public comment is Dmitri Vandelos.
Actually, Patty Marsters offered her time for me, just in case I go over a little bit. Hopefully, I won't. So, I've got a quick presentation that addresses specific concerns south of Holly Street. I know that you're going to be looking at a list of issues that invited you, but what I'm focusing on are specific issues that are south of Holly. And I think what would help us all is to think about a really targeted approach where we break down issues that are south of Holly, because they're unique to south of Holly. We have issues that affect Holly Street, kind of that are unique to Holly Street, and issues that are north of Holly, because they're kind of three different areas that have their own specific issues. And then, I think a larger sort of east side plan can be developed from the representatives from those three zones. So, in terms of south of Holly, one of the big issues, and I'm not going to read through all these bullet points, is businesses abutting residential. There are often issues with operations at all hours of the day, and night, and weekends, and holidays, and noise and light pollution, and issues with non-conforming businesses. So, it's especially acute on Montgomery and Hall Street, but also at the end of the blocks. So, I'm just bringing up these issues so we can maybe address them in a future meeting. There's a lack of landscaping for most of these businesses, and I'd like to see the city actually work with the businesses to try to get some increased landscaping, particularly along residential property lines. One positive note is on Montgomery and Old County, there's some landscaping that's now being maintained after -- I've been living here for 20 years, and we're finally getting something there, which is great. But unfortunately, on East San Carlos Avenue, there are a bunch of trees that were planted 15, 20 years ago. They've never been maintained, and it would be really great to see nice big trees there. The East San Carlos street configuration. We have these bulb-outs. It creates real pedestrian-unfriendly situations, and cars that frequent the businesses kind of block the area, and it's something that I'd like us to examine and try to figure out what we can do. One of the residents who I was discussing this list of issues was saying that he's concerned about East San Carlos, the light at East San Carlos Industrial creating incentives for more traffic to cut through our residential neighborhood. I want to bring up my favorite subject, shuttle buses. Some residents have told me that shuttles driving down East San Carlos are a big problem, and it creates all sorts of issues with people trying to cross the street. You can read through the specific bullet points there, but essentially, it's just the lights are programmed to favor cars, not pedestrians, and people are trying to get to the train station. Old County Road Traffic. It's a 35 mile-per-hour zone. It's pretty unsafe trying to cross the street there, and I'd like to see us look at reducing the speed limit. Additionally, people have been reporting that the traffic gets blocked on the intersections, especially around rush hour, and when you're trying to turn into the street or turn out of these streets along Montgomery and Hall and Cherry, because there are cars and trucks parked right at the corner, the visibility is incredibly low. I almost got into an accident the other day, just because someone was pulled up. I couldn't see, and we're just sort of waiting for an accident to happen there. We've talked, you know, I'm sure your ears have been talked off about issues with the train station. There's still a lot of problems there. My favorite is the last one. Resident said pigeon poop. I changed it to what's up on the bullet points. So, I'd like to see some targeted thought around the train station. Whoa. Eastside development. We're getting a lot of development on the east side, and we're not really getting, at least east side residents don't feel we're getting any real mitigations or improvements to the residential community. We're concerned about the general plan not being followed, and lots of these businesses are older, so I understand why we'd want to get new stuff in there, but I want to make sure we do it in a way that works with the neighborhood.
Let me chair hopefully.
We're ready to go. Yeah, thank you. One thing to really consider is all of these projects occurring. They're going to be overlapping, and I'm concerned about being able to get in and out of my home. I'm concerned about other residents being able to get in and out of our homes. You know, this is not just, you know, a few homes being built, you know, potentially at a park. This is 500 residents, and a lot, a lot of impact. So, what I'd like to see is a new task force that's assigned to create an east side-specific plan, and I'd like to see, we talked about city council east side representative, maybe we need multiple representatives. That's never happened, and I'd really like to see something happen there, create a dialogue so we can actually move forward on issues. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks for the extra time.
Next speaker, Rita Fusaro.
First of all, before I say anything, I have a comment on the bus lines and shuttles. I wonder if they could be, like, van-sized instead of bus? I mean, the term "bus" is scary. Maybe we can get cute vans that don't occupy so much road space, and that they might be green. That's just a side thought, and yeah, so I just want to get that out. But anyways, as council -- But anyways, as council knows, I'm a member of your TNC Commission, and for my fellow neighbors who may or may not know, well, so now you do. So I'd like to acknowledge that. And although I'm fairly new, I do find myself enjoying it more and more, and as our community continues to grow, I'd like to see some of these issues maybe be delegated to the TNC. I think we have a great, I'm in the company of a lot of very intelligent and capable group of people, and I'm really honored to be working with them and with Public Works. And we're trying to address the, not just the existing needs, but the anticipated ones that are sure to come down with all the new construction of housing and businesses. But having said all that, I do realize what it takes to be a member of the commission. It is a voluntary position, and I do know that while it's a group with a lot of diverse suggestions and viewpoints, the one thing that's most important is to keep San Carlos the brass ring of the peninsula, because I really feel that it is. And I think a lot of people that live here feel that it is. But trying to do that while we're trying to, you know, keep our community up, while you all are trying to keep our community up to date, I know it's quite a job. So I thank you for that and all that. So...
Rita, if you could just wrap it up, please.
I do. I'm here because I want to, I want to say that there are, the GESC Neighborhood Board that we have in the San Carlo, East San Carlos community, is, I feel, an essential bridge between our target-rich community and city council here, and that they've absolutely learned, earned their place here. And I think and hope that they've earned the respect of this council, and I hope the respect and understanding from city staff and the manager as well. And with so much going on in one neighborhood all at once, we do need someone to continue building that bridge and keeping our neighborhood informed on a community level. And so for that reason, I began to speak with some of my neighbors last week to get an understanding of who felt the same way. And while I didn't connect with everyone, I connected with enough to know that we do feel that same way. So we do want the GESC Board to continue recognizing our streets in their efforts to enhance and safeguard our community, and I want to thank them for all their effort as well. So I look forward to working with you and them. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next is Holly Jones. Just for future speakers, I've been a little lenient with the first two, but we have a lot of cards tonight, so if you can keep your comments to two minutes.
I'm super quick.
Thank you.
First, I just want to just let you know that I appreciate everything that I know you're trying to do for Holly Street. And being a newer, one of the newer residents on the street, I've been learning a lot in the last few months, and so...
Would you read it?
I'm sorry. I'm on Holly Street, and I just, I know that there's been so much hubbub and chatter, and it kind of makes me sick a little bit, but I just want you to know that I support you, because I know you're working hard, and I know you're doing your best that you can. But I guess one thing that is important to me is just, if I could choose anything on the list, if we could do anything that we can to get the speed limit down, it would mean a lot. And I was even talking with my husband as we're sitting in the dining room last night, looking out thinking, "That would be a perfect spot for a motorcycle cop." Just, you know, if you wanted to run a little speed trap, we're willing to let you have a spot to sit. Anyways, that's really all I have to say, but I just want to know, you to know that I'm here to support you as best as I can, and I know it's not easy. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And stick around, you might hear some interesting things. Next is Eduardo Sampedrio. Edward, I apologize. This, your item is on the agenda, so we'll come back to you. Thank you, Cameron. All right. I just did, I had it out of order here. Next is Bob Danner.
Hi, Bob Danner. I just would like to thank, or to express my appreciation to the city council, the city staff, and our Park and Recreation Commission for providing the new dog park. Going way back to all the years that I was on the Park and Rec Commission, there was always that strong desire for a dedicated dog park. Now the dog owners have a place to call their own. And I merely want to thank you all for making our city a better place. A disclaimer, I do not own a dog.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Paul Maginetti.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, to review the agenda, I've got to make my comments on Item Eight. It says that it's more...
We'll just retitle this to Item Eight?
Eight.
Okay.
Eight-A, yeah.
Eight-A, okay. All right. Well, in that case, it looks like we don't have any other comments for items not on the agenda. Would anyone else like to speak for any item not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Moving along to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Before you do that...
I'm sorry?
I was, I'm sorry, I was switching on my light, and I wanted to pull Item H.
Okay. Mark, do you want to amend your motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar, Items Seven-A through G, and I, and J.
I second.
All right. Okay. Yvette?
Councilmember Chris Hilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes. Okay, moving on to Item Eight. Reports to council. These are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They are for informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items. We have one item, is to receive a presentation on the results to date of the parking restrictions and striping changes on Holly Street from Industrial Road to Old County Road and other council-directed improvements. Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And we'll go ahead and get started with our presentation. So some background on Holly Street within the city of San Carlos. Many years ago, and it was too long for me to remember or to actually find a record to say when it happened, to help with the peak commute traffic, Holly Street traffic was allowed to flow in four lanes for a portion of each day, on Monday through Friday. The eastbound traffic was allowed to form two lanes between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., and from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And the westbound traffic was allowed to form two lanes between 3:00 and 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And this was in existence for, as far as I understand, over 20 years, and with signage that indicated it was okay to drive in that, in two lanes. But without a lane stripe, we were observing that compliance was pretty erratic, and vehicles often ignored the signage and stayed in the middle of the lane, for safety reasons or comfort reasons, probably more than, more likely. So in July of 2014, the council adopted the ordinance that amended parking restrictions on Holly Street, and this is between Industrial to Old County, to restrict parking between 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Vehicles were allowed to park in the evenings and on weekends and holidays. And at the time, council also approved implementing a new signal, new signal timing for Holly Street at the El Camino and Old County Road intersections, and then down at Industrial Road. In October 2014, the parking restrictions signs went up. The striping project to add lane lines on each direction was completed, and the signal timing was implemented. And we basically started a period of evaluation and to see how it would perform. We hired a traffic consultant to perform the traffic counts at specified intervals, and essentially we ended up with four different monitoring periods, one of them before the modifications took place. And during the April 27th, 20, actually, I should say 2015, I apologize, update to the city council, several options were presented by residents and city staff. And those options were things that the residents felt would be, should be considered by the city council for Holly Street, and they, they were over a very broad range of options. And at that meeting, council gave direction on several options for staff to move forward with. And over the summer, we worked to implement each of those items that you gave us direction on, and it came at a cost, a total cost of about $84,000. And we have some information, we can break those down if necessary, but that was the total cost. We also completed the final data collection run, the first week of school, which was basically around the first week of September, which coincided with the one-year-ago timeframe when we first started the data collection. So the council-directed items that we installed over the summer, we've placed electronic message signs at both ends of Holly Street, warning drivers of parked cars ahead. Those signs come on in the evenings and on the weekends, and then they go off during the day. And it essentially was to deliver a more easily-read message rather than the large yellow signs that we had there before and the other smaller parking signs. So we felt like that was an important element to add in there. We also implemented truck weight restriction signs, and we've added them on Highway 101, northbound and southbound as you, as you approach the Holly interchange, that indicate that Holly Street between Industrial and Old County Road is restricted, that is, trucks larger than seven tons may not transit that. And we put the signs also on El Camino before you come onto Holly Street, and then on Holly Street right before the intersection with Industrial Road. We also went ahead and put truck route signs on some of our city streets. I'm not sure what happened, Yvette.
I apologize. There we go. Sorry.
Thanks. Sorry for that. And anyway, the truck route signs, which essentially have the words "truck route" with arrows, left or right or straight ahead, that are, that are placed with them, we put those signs in place on both of the approaches to Holly Street to direct traffic down El Camino or down Industrial Road to Britton or Howard, because that's the east-west route within the city limits that trucks can take. So we have provided that positive direction for truckers as they would approach. They'll notice a change, and they'll be able to follow those signs to be able to get to their destination either east or west of the train tracks. We also implemented a residential cart service that was designed to help keep sidewalks clear in the morning. On Thursdays, when trash pickup occurs, the carts had oftentimes been placed back on the sidewalks, and the sidewalks are fairly narrow on Holly Street, and so the cart placement now is behind the sidewalk, and that's designed to help keep the sidewalks clear so that there's less likelihood that some of the carts will be put into the gutter as pedestrians try to pass. And we also completed a speed zone survey that was conducted for Holly Street and Old County Roads, so we'll have some data that we can share on that fairly soon. But those were the items the council directed us to, to move forward with, and that's what we, what we worked on. So some results from the, the data that we've collected and the, the things that have been implemented. We found that traffic volumes were nearly identical, eastbound and westbound, for the periods of the day during all of our four data periods. So effectively, it's telling us that the, the same amount of traffic is getting through the corridor within those time periods when that data was being collected. Didn't make much, there was not much of a seasonal variation, there was an occasional day-of-the-week variation, but very consistent traffic volumes. We found that speeds are lower on Holly Street since the changes, and well down over the last speed zone survey. So that does give us some hope that we may be able to consider lowering the speed limit on Holly Street. We also have noticed that traffic queues, that is, the line of vehicles that are waiting at the signals to proceed forward, are much lower, or shorter than they used to be, nearly in half in most cases, as traffic waits to go in each end. So we have now very rarely the, the full two lanes of cars from one end to the other, where in the past with one lane, we often had a very, very long queue. And there's also been gaps that have been created to allow access to driveways. As traffic clears through this segment of Holly Street with, when the signals are green, it's been allowing some definite gaps that allow some access in and out of driveways. And the Holly Parking Request Program that was identified last year as a means to have the ability to park a vehicle in front of the residence, if it was a repair vehicle, a moving vehicle, or some other kind of a vehicle, it was, it was started, and it was only used sporadically over the last year. Only about seven requests were made, and that was handled through the police department. What we've learned in this is, we found that the travel time runs have not changed significantly since the changes. So that means the, the time of, for a vehicle to get through from one end of Holly Street to the other in either eastbound or westbound direction has largely been the same. There hasn't been much change in that regard. However, westbound travel took longer than eastbound travel. So the, the occurrence of vehicles traveling eastbound from, going under the train tracks, coming onto Holly Street, and then heading down past Industrial, are encountering a green signal at Industrial more often than the traffic that's headed eastbound. And so travel times are consequently a little shorter. What we found, though, in that is that the signal timing favors El Camino Real traffic. So the traffic signal that is timed at El Camino and Holly Street has a finite amount of time that can allow vehicles to move through the intersection, and the majority of that time is to El Camino Real, north and south traffic. And so what we're finding is that that traffic on Holly Street is simply not getting enough time to clear that signal and make it all the way through onto El Camino. So that's, that's kind of what we've, we've, we learned as it relates to the travel time, especially in the eastbound direction. And the other thing is that the lane configuration at each end didn't change, which means we didn't add any lanes or widen the intersections on either end of this section. And essentially, when you, when you're sitting and waiting at either end, it's the same approach, the same number of vehicles can proceed into the intersection as we had before. And of course, with a wider intersection configuration with more lanes, we would be able to move more traffic through the intersections. But we didn't have that as part of our scope, and that didn't occur. So other things that happened during the course of the last year, in, in January, we had a Shape San Carlos topic that 30 residents responded to, and the question specifically was, "Have you noticed an improvement along Holly Street since changes were made in September?" And the results showed that 50% stated they thought it was a minor or major improvement. 30% thought there was really not much of a change, and 20% said that it was worse. So we did, we did get some, we'll call it, it's not scientific necessarily, but it's structured opinion that we went out to get, and there's certainly been a number of folks who've offered anecdotal observations for the, the changes that were made. So now that the sign project is complete, that is, our truck restriction signs are in place, the truck weight enforcement by the sheriff's office will start October 1st. And so they will set up an opportunity for the truck drivers to be educated on the new regulations and advised as to the new routes they're supposed to be taking. So I've talked to the, to the chief office, and, and that's when he's planning to start this. We expect that there will be a learning curve, and yet we're hopeful that the trucks will get the message very quickly. As it relates to the sheriff's office, Chief Roethlis let me know that they responded to a few concerns of speeding over the last year, but at this point, there were no collisions related to the lane changes that occurred that were in their database. And then one final note, as we kind of head now into the, towards the end of 2015, the Holly US 101 interchange will likely begin construction in the summer of 2016. So we're getting close to where we'll have one of our real major bottlenecks for the community under construction and improved in a, in probably a little, in probably just about a year. And with that, I'll be able to, to answer questions if the council has them.
Thanks, Jay. Cameron?
Thanks, Jay. I have one question about the signalization and then sort of a broader comment. So you, you said here that we've learned that essentially, I, the way I interpret it is we still haven't gotten the signalization right at El Camino. Is that, is that right? Can you expand a little bit, and are we, are we planning to do anything additional?
Well, it's, I think the, maybe it's the wrong term to use, we didn't get it quite right. But what we have to do is we have to make an adjustment, that is, we have to expand the traffic signal cycle at El Camino and Holly. So it's currently at about 130 seconds, and so in order to be able to give more time to Holly Street... And so in order to be able to give more time to Holly Street and keep the same amount of time for El Camino north and south, we'd have to expand that cycle length. So that is something that we could talk to Caltrans about.
Did we not do that when we made the changes to Holly Street? Because originally, the presentation to council when we looked at this a year ago was, there were three components that you argued had to be done simultaneously, striping, parking restrictions, and signalization. So I never really understood whether the signalization was complete, and did it change? So did it change at that time?
It did change at that time.
It did, okay. But it needs a further refinement, is that?
Right. And the primary component that changed at the time was, we were able to interconnect the signal at Industrial and Holly with the signals up at El Camino, so that we could ensure some progressive flow eastbound and westbound, whereas before, they were entirely disconnected. And that was the, that was one of the main things we achieved with this signal timing program.
Okay. And is that something that staff is pursuing, or is it a question as to whether or not we ought to pursue it?
It's something that we can pursue. At this moment in time, we're not, because we've really just finished getting the latest round of data and have determined kind of what we think are the results and kind of where we stand today. But it is something we can pursue.
Okay. I don't know if others have questions. I had a general comment, but I can wait and see if others had questions.
All right. Bob?
Couple of questions. The four data periods, could you explain what data period means?
Oh, so as it relates to the data period, we decided to collect data four separate times during the year. So essentially, it was before we made the improvements, and then we made, which was, we put tubes down, and we collected traffic volumes, and we did travel time runs. And so we did that. And then we did it again in December.
Just to jump and digging down deep, when you do it, I guess defining a period is 24 hours, 48 hours?
Three days. So we did it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and we picked days when school is in session and non-holiday weeks.
So you did it four times, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, for a period of?
One week.
No, for a period of hours? I'm sorry.
24 hours a day. I'm sorry.
24 hours a day. Okay, that's what I was trying to identify, so that you got a complete picture of the whole thing. Thank you. So you indicated in the last, in the, you know, the Holly US 101 intersection or intersection to begin construction in the summer of 2016. What, I know it's impossible to know exactly, but what do you, somewhat educated guess, how long would that take?
It's probably going to at least take 18 months to build.
That's two years. Okay. Thank you.
That's it? All right. Matt?
So I had a couple of questions, actually, three. You had mentioned about the sign that notifies people, a digital sign that notifies about the traffic changes, that parking is ahead. And I've actually seen that a couple of times when I've been headed westbound, but I've never seen it when I'm traveling eastbound. And I'm just kind of curious where it's located.
If you're aware of the entry point for L'Oriola Park on Holly Street?
Yeah.
At that point, there's a streetlight pole that's there, reds right as you approach the corner, as you start to go left. And so it's mounted on that streetlight pole, right at that location.
Okay. I'll watch for it. Just empirical evidence from me is, I would wonder about the location of it, because, like I said, I've traveled both directions, seen it a couple of times going one way, but not the other. So I just would kind of question the effectiveness of where it is located. You mentioned about the trucks and the signage on different routes and so forth. Has there been any effort, on the other hand, to contact the companies that we would presume are having trucks coming in and out of San Carlos? Like, for instance, you know, I know, you know, the grocery stores, for instance, have trucks coming in and out with their goods and so forth. Kelly Moore has trucks coming in and out. Has there been any effort to identify which businesses are probably having that, you know, those kind of large truck deliveries, and then getting ahold of them to let them know in a different way that this is going on?
We have not done that yet. We focused our efforts on getting the ordinance passed with the council and then getting the sign project up in place.
Okay. And then staying on that subject, have we any issues with enforcement, or have we done anything to, you know, kind of watch the street and see if it's being followed or not?
That's something which we will have starting October 1st.
Oh, I see.
Because we only just recently, in the last couple of weeks, finished the project.
Okay. And then the last question I have, I guess I'm a little confused, because I saw a survey to people, "How do you think the effectiveness is?" And then I thought I saw in your presentation, a data that says the traffic is pretty much the same before and after we did the striping and made all the changes.
The, that's correct. The traffic volumes, that is, the actual count of vehicles, has remained very consistent. And the travel times, that is, how long it takes you to get from one end to the other, hasn't really changed much.
So there could be an argument at some point to say, "This is not really working. It's creating more problems for the residents than what it's worth. Let's go back to what we had before."
My recommendation wouldn't be to do that.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that the data is there.
Based purely on that evaluation of that data, then council would have to ask themselves that question and decide if it's worth it or not.
Through the chair, I think part of this also, at least the way in my looked at it, wasn't only for the specific time. That's why I asked the question about when we're doing Holly. I mean, I can anticipate, at least personally, and maybe it's just my opinion, that it's going to get, in other words, this is going to happen. So that's just my idea.
Anything else, Matt?
That's it for questions.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions, Jay. First off, I may have missed this. Can you enlighten me a little bit more on whether or not the speed survey data looks like it'll be supportive of lowering the speed limit, which a number of residents have requested?
The preliminary indications of the speeds that were observed and measured indicates, to me at least, that that could be considered. That is, it's not so high that we would not be able to lower that speed without it becoming an official speed trap.
A percentile test, right. Okay. Thank you. My other question is, you mentioned that in the analysis that you've done of the results from the data gathering appear to indicate that the main reason that you didn't get as much of a beneficial improvement as you'd anticipated is because of the configuration of the timing of the light at El Camino and Holly, in terms of its duration, 130 seconds you were talking about.
Yes.
And I know there was a bit of a follow-on question about whether we would pursue this. And you sort of said, if I heard you correctly, if the council so chooses, since our goal is to try and improve the traffic flow, and we're saying that's the constraining factor, why wouldn't we pursue that?
There's no real reason that we wouldn't pursue it. The difficulty becomes that the El Camino Real Highway 82 is a state facility. It's controlled, and so as the state would determine its priorities, then it may determine that those priorities from a north-south traffic flow are more important to them than the side street, as I call it, side street traffic flow in the local communities. So there would have to be some discussions with them and some agreement that the timing could be modified to make that work.
My understanding is that those types of discussions, because we're hardly the only community that, where the issue of an interaction between state highways and local highways comes into play, those kind of conversations are in fact quite common. And while certainly not always, that a part of the reason they're so common is that adjustments do have an opportunity to be made.
I would agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Matt, again?
Yeah. I remember at one time, I thought, when we were talking about getting the survey done for Holly, that it would also be extended a little bit to include Old County. And I'm curious if that was done.
It was done at the same time.
It was done.
But because the, tonight's presentation was on Holly Street, I didn't say that. But yes, we did gather the data for Old County Road as well.
I did notice during public comment that it was mentioned about the speed limit being a little bit high there for what's going on. And I've raised that with city manager before too. So I'll be curious to see what the results are and how that's going.
Okay, yes, it's been collected.
All right. Matt? I'm, sorry. Cameron? Sorry.
He's on first.
Yeah, who is on first?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment and sort of propose some action here to see if my colleagues will join me. I'll say, first and foremost, I like parking in front of my house. And when I drive home and there's somebody parked in front of my house, and I have to park one house over, it's frustrating, even though I have no legal claims to that parking spot. And, but I like to be able to park in front of my house. I think most residents do. I would imagine most council members do. What we did here is, we said to a group of residents, "Well, you can't park in front of your homes, and that's because we want to get through this corridor faster." And I think that's a reasonable trade-off that, you know, we have to make. And the argument that was presented a year ago was, "Hey, if we do these three things simultaneously, if we restripes the roads, if we change the signalization, and if we restrict parking, then it'll improve traffic flow." Should be noted that traffic, or parking was already restricted at rush hour time, so there wasn't, you couldn't park there all the time. But it was to restrict parking all day long, essentially from sunup till sundown. And the data has come back and it has shown that, you know, the traffic flow hasn't improved. And I think the restriping is great. I think the configuration is a lot better. I think what we've done with the reduction of speed limit is good. I think the electronic signs are good. I think the weight restrictions are good. But I do think that it's irresponsible to say, "Hey, we were going to inconvenience a couple of streets and a bunch of residents because we wanted to move faster." Well, you know, traffic isn't actually moving any faster, but you still can't park there. And so I think it's pretty definitive, and I think that we should keep the striping the way it is, keep the signalization the way it is, keep, you know, continue to look at removing the speed limit. But I think we should have let people park in front of their homes on non-peak hours. And even that may, you know, the public perception may be, you know, that's a step back overall, but I don't think we have really a leg to stand on. There's no data that can really justify what we've done here. So that's my proposal. I wanted to see if I could get two of my colleagues to join me in agendizing, allowing people to park in front of their homes on off-peak hours.
I'd go for that.
Matt?
Yeah.
No, Bob?
Mark?
Nope.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Jay, I had a couple of questions. And this, the part where you talked about the Holly Parking Request, you said they were sporadically used. Any thoughts on why that is? Was it not poorly communicated, or was there just not the interest that you thought there might be?
Well, maybe some of the Holly residents that will speak under public comment tonight may ask or may add to this, but I think it just came down to that they were not needed as much as it was originally thought they would be needed. But they were available and made available through the police department. And so I guess that's kind of the thought, is as we look back over the year, they were needed less frequently than absolutely. And it may be in that many of the residents allowed contractors' truck to park on the driveway, for example, instead of being able to take a space on the street.
Right. You also mentioned that the Holly 101 construction is going to begin pretty soon. Can you speculate a little bit on what impact that might have on not only Holly, but Industrial while that's going on?
Well, it's definitely going to be a very complicated project. So noise, dust will be an issue, as it always would be in a large construction project. I think we're going to need to do some freeway signage, which may urge some folks to take different interchanges while these are under construction. But I know Caltrans will require us to maintain as much of the lanes of access on the ramps as they leave and go onto the freeway as exists now, because they're not, they're not fans of the idea that you would, you know, shut down half an interchange while you rebuild it unless it was absolutely necessary. So I think that there will be disruption, there will be a lot more traffic and congestion as it relates to that, because it's a very large construction project.
How long do you anticipate that project will be under construction?
I think it'll be 18 months to build it.
Okay. And when it's all said and done, though, what do you think, and again, I'm just asking your opinions on this, what do you think the impact will have on, like, the travel volumes and travel times and that sort of thing, that we've seen not much of a change so far?
I'm not sure that there'll be very much of a change on Holly Street itself, because the interchange, the improvements don't include the intersection on the west side of Industrial, that is Holly. But it does include, it does include some additional lanes on the eastbound direction on Holly as you go towards the freeway. So I think there'll be probably very little effect on Holly Street itself in terms of more traffic through or faster travel times, absent any other change.
All right. And then you mentioned the Old County Road data, the speed data. Is that, are we going to talk about that in the, are you going to bring that up in the study session in 9A? Or do you have information that you can share with us now?
At this point, I don't, because we've only recently gathered that data, so I knew.
So it's not yet ready for prime time?
Correct. Well, I will tell you that speeds observed in the area of the train station, especially where the bulbous have been built, is much lower than it was before. So I think that's a promising sign. But again, we have more locations on Old County to analyze the data before we make any recommendations.
All right. And then, but that's separate from the Holly Street speed. Is that correct?
That's right. Both streets have to be, have their own engineering and traffic survey done to establish the speed limits for them.
Okay. And that is, those things are proceeding?
That's right.
Okay. The last thing I had was, while you were going through this process, and this is really an open-ended question, are there any other ideas or observations that you've come up with that maybe no one had thought of while you went through this process? Anything come to mind that, gee, maybe there's some other things we could have done? Nobody thought to ask?
Short of something much more, much larger in terms of its scope, like expanding lanes at the, at each end of Holly Street as you approach the intersections, which is obviously significantly higher cost and would require right away to be acquired for the road to be widened. But as it relates to this segment of Holly Street itself, absent any physical changes, no, I don't think so. I think the idea that we would pursue with Caltrans a longer signal timing cycle length for El Camino has some promise, but I'm not sure that there's much more we would be able to do along Holly Street.
All right. So we've done pretty much all the things on the list, and we've seen the results. You think there's any more little tweaking that, well, that may change the data or move it a little bit?
Again, I think only the modification of the cycle, signal cycle length on El Camino would do that for Holly Street.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Jay? Not seeing any lights on? All right. This is a time where we're going to entertain public comment on this item. The first speaker card I have is Paul Maginetti.
Thank you, gentlemen. For the record, I saw no merge left signs this last weekend. The reason I'm here speaking is, during the week, I was traveling west at 6:30, and both lanes, people were just blatantly ignoring the signs and going down them. So I complained to the sheriff and got a very interesting reply. It's, they said, and I won't read this whole thing out, but it says, "In short, the signage used by the city does not meet the state regulations for enforcement. I would suggest using the right lane to approach your home/driveway, or in my case, turning right onto Springfield to get to my home." So there is no enforcement of this signage. It has no benefit, and people ignore it with impunity. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Eduardo Sampedrio.
The topic I want to bring today is Holly Street parking. The topic I want to bring today is Holly Street parking. Cameron just brought up the opportunity of relaxing these parking restrictions totally. I want to give you another option. The data that we just received is very similar to last year's. The chart that I have here is last year's information. I wasn't able to get this year's, but as we know, the data hasn't changed much. Bottom line, I want to show you in this chart on the top that between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM, the eastbound side has a much higher traffic than the west side. This is people going out of San Carlos to the freeway. We are looking at 7:00 AM, you know, 750 cars per hour compared to westbound and 500. 8:00 AM, 875, the peak, and 9:00 AM, 800, while on the westbound, we still have 500 cars per hour. This is significant difference on these two sides. On the west side is where we can park. So all the residents on the west side and on east side, they can park on the west side. Currently, we cannot park after 7:00 AM in the morning, which makes it very difficult for us to park overnight and then being able to go to work, because we need to move our cars before 7:00. That's 6 something. Very difficult, not very convenient. We don't need that restriction. I don't want to ask you to relax the whole parking during the whole day, but what about 7:00 to 9:00 AM? It would be very beneficial for the people living there and very little impact for the rest of the community. So that's my request, and I hope we could consider it. I think it's very reasonable. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Eduardo. Next is Louis Hom.
I'd just like to echo the comments of Eduardo and Cameron earlier. Looking at the westbound car numbers, 500 cars per hour, you can think of that as one car every seven seconds, right? So if there are 600 seconds in an hour, so that's car. And we had another car come by. And so I think it makes a lot of sense to remove the restrictions for the westbound morning traffic on Holly Street. I think that was an unnecessary change at the beginning, and I think we've seen from the data that it doesn't make sense to keep that particular portion of these changes in place. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hom. Next is Priya Joseph.
I think thanks, Cameron, for at least bringing it up. I'm just surprised nobody else supported it. So I didn't see the presentation that Jay did, but public safety, I hope you really think about it. I really want you guys to walk there. I've said this before. There's no clearance. I don't know how you guys can sit here and say it's okay. I've walked on all of the west side. There's no speed bump, you know, nothing, you know, if you just stretch your arm, your arm is going to get cut off when you walk in the morning and in the evening. And so, I mean, you know, this is just atrocious that you think for 50 years, it's okay to not have a solution, and all that you can do is to just restrict parking with no enforcement. How can that 1,000 feet be a solution for, you know, growths in the area? So you have to think of other solutions. You have to be open to other solutions. If you can't, you just have to step aside, you know, and let people with ideas to take over. So that is my recommendation.
Thank you. All right.
Okay. So I just wanted to echo the comment that somebody made about the merging signs on the weekends. I haven't noticed them, so I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't notice them on, on the weekends. I just wanted to point that out. And then lowering this, I know that from talking to my neighbors, the number one thing, if they had like their wish list, really would be just to get that speed limit. I'm hearing it's a possibility to get it down to 25. Be really, really nice. There are so many streets in major cities. One that I just was on the other day, I felt like I should start taking pictures, because I'm all up and down the peninsula. But in Bargadera Way in Palo Alto is a four-lane, just like, I mean, it's a thoroughfare, and it's 25 miles an hour. And it's, it's 25 because it indicates there's people, there's considerations other than cars nearby. And so we, I feel like we, and Holly Street, fall into that bucket. So that's, that I think would be something that would really make the residents of Holly Street really happy. And then the last thing I want to talk about is the, I think, Bob, Chris, you mentioned that, that the concern for the future and more traffic and coming in. So my concern about the signalization and, and the future and all this is getting in and out of our driveways. We really, really rely on traffic stopping at both ends so that we can have a chance to get out and get in the direction we need to go. There's already gaps in the day where we can't do that. It just like, as soon as like, oh, here comes the last car. Oh, no, somebody else is coming. So this is, this is a concern, because we can't get in and out of our driveway. I almost want to, feel like I want to give you guys a ride, because we, it's funny, talking to my neighbors, I know that everybody's got their own tricks. So mine currently is I straddle the middle lane, I put my right blinker on, and I put my left arm out, just so I can confuse people, letting know I'm turning right before I do, I'm merging left, so I can swing out and get in. And I stop the traffic. I have to, because I can't get in my driveway. I can't get in from the right hand. So I drive very slowly, very early on, like about three houses down, because I don't want to start all that commotion. But it's, it's a concerted effort to try and get in and out. So whatever we do, I just really want to make sure that we give the residents of Holly ample time where there's a break in traffic, so we can get in and out of our driveways. That's, that's all I would suggest, consider. Thank you.
All right.
Hi there. Thank you so much for listening again. I'm sorry I'm back up here, but I thought I should mention, Jay had mentioned that there was that parking request program for in case we needed to have something parked in. I had no idea that existed, so I would have been using that like crazy, because I've just been doing a lot of renovations. So anyways, that would be nice to know about. I don't even know how to get involved in that. But anyway, I was just thinking about these bulbouts that I've been just hearing about on Old County. And I thought, we're trying to slow things down for Old County, but we're trying to speed things up for Holly Street. And that, that's where like all these people live. So I don't know, I just thought that might be, that was kind of an interesting notion for me. Also about the flashing sign for cars parked ahead. I've noticed that it, I didn't see it anyways on the weekends, so I just thought I'd mention that, because that might be helpful for me with the cars honking their horns every time they see a car in front of my house that's parked when they're expecting it to continue on. Also, I was thinking about the, somebody had mentioned that they recommended we, we turn to get into our driveways by getting in the far right lane and making a quick turn. Well, it's pretty much impossible, because our driveways are so narrow. So if I do go stay in that tight right lane and make a right angle, it's not really possible unless I, that I got to hop the curb, so my curb's all messed up from people hopping the curb. Anyway, so there's a lot of, a lot going on clearly, and I'm preaching to the choir. You guys already know what's happening. And Cameron, I really appreciate your support with trying to do whatever we can to help us out. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Holly. Next is Ben Fuller.
Hi, guys. Hey, just one quick thing I mentioned about, I heard about the 132nd interchange at El Camino. The challenge is going to be getting pedestrians across, and no one mentioned that, and that's a huge safety issue. So I think we need to figure out a way to resolve that. And I saw in the staff report, this idea of amalgamating on some sort of crosswalk onto the berm or something like that, where we could get folks across. And pedestrian safety is going to come up later, and we want, we think is a huge issue. Another thing I wanted to bring up is Holly Street representation. So we had been told explicitly by a few members of Holly Street that we don't represent them, and so we were kind of ready to sort of let them represent themselves. And we reached out to some of the folks on Holly Street and just said, hey, you know, you don't want us to represent you. And they said, actually, we do. We're just the more quiet contingent of that group. And so there's a little bit of disagreement there, but we do want to help these folks. Another thing is, it seems a little bit like some of the folks at Holly might be getting hammered, because they can't really get their act together. There's no agreement, and I know that's really frustrating for you guys, for Holly, for everybody. It would be nice if some of their initial things, like driveway aprons and stuff like that, were maybe reconsidered. And then the last thing is, you know, I tell you what, if I would have lived on that street, there's no way that it would have passed at 7:00 AM, because I like to sleep in, I would have done whatever I could to stop it. And Cameron, I got to, I got to thank you for really sticking your neck out there, Cameron. I think that was amazing, what you just did. And I would love it if we could just find a way to give these guys two more hours based on the data. It's really great data, so please consider that, guys. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Okay. That's all the speaker slips I have for this item. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that didn't turn in a card? If so, feel free to come up.
I'm Catherine Blinken. I live on Cherry, but I drive Holly every day. And I want to reiterate that a slower speed limit would be a lot safer, and that I never see the flashing sign westbound. I do see it when I come off the freeway, but I never have seen it. I didn't even know there was one posted going westbound, so I do think it might not be in the right place. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine.
Through the chair, can I just ask for a clarification?
Sure.
So we did pass a reduction in the speed limit. Is that correct? Because it seems to be a little bit of confusion on that.
I believe what we did was to direct staff to do the study that was necessary.
Is that, is that the case?
That's correct.
And can you just give us a brief timeline where that is in the process?
The data has been collected, as it relates to the speed data that we needed to do. That's kind of the basic element of it. So we'll be getting together with our traffic engineering, our engineering staff and the sheriff's office staff, and we'll be reviewing the various components of a speed zone survey, that is collisions that have occurred, traffic volumes, speeds, and factors that should be considered when it comes to setting a speed, and then make a recommendation for it. So it should, actually should take probably no more than about 30 or 60 days.
Okay. Does that go to TNC before it goes to council?
It doesn't have to, but certainly could, if, if there's some merit in discussing that.
Currently, it's a 30, right?
30.
Okay. All right.
Personally, through the chair, I'd be perfectly fine if the council has to act on it, bring it back directly to the council.
Yeah. The sooner the better, from my perspective.
Okay, there's.
No disrespect meant for Rita, but if.
Oh, I would introduce myself in that discussion.
And the members of your commissions, just that, you know, we understand the importance of this, and.
We'll work on, realizing that it's, yes, absolutely, realizing the urgency of that. And again, it was one of those things that we had on the plate to work on this summer. We've gathered the data, so now we'll take the next steps.
Great. All right. Matt, you had a question?
I had a question and then a comment. Trying to remember when we first proposed this whole change to Holly Street, was it proposed as a, you know, let's try this out for a certain period of time and see how it works? Or was it proposed as a permanent change?
Well, it was, it was proposed as changes that we would evaluate over the course of time. So not necessarily, it didn't have a sunset date on it when we did it?
But, okay. And so my comment would be, given the public comment that we received and the data that we received about westbound versus eastbound, I'd like to try again at what Cameron was trying earlier, which is simply just, if we could have this agendized, to look at changing the parking with, you know, allow staff to make a recommendation one way or the other, and then for us to have a discussion. And hopefully, staff would look at, you know, what the residents are recommending in the data, that possibly we just do one side of the street and not the other, and just make some adjustments. You know, maybe staff, if we would agree to having that on the agenda, maybe the staff report says we don't recommend any changes at all. But I think giving them a chance to look at that data and what was suggested, and then allowing us to discuss it, you know, people are asking for this. I think we should respond as a council and open up that opportunity.
Through the chair?
Mark? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Just as a general matter, something I've learned since being on the council is not specifically related to this item, but I want to remind everybody, including ourselves, everything we do is temporary, because everything we do today, we can decide the next meeting to change. I routinely have discussions about all sorts of issues related to items that we've addressed in the past and taken positions on with staff, and I would continue to do that in the future, and I presume my colleagues do as well. And if we ever get to the point where, I guess the rule currently is, three people want to bring an item back for discussion, then we will bring it back for discussion. But I actually want us to get out of the practice of making decisions and then sort of saying, well, we'll revisit it at a certain time in the future. If that's really how we feel, then don't make the decision, because every decision we make is subject to change.
Cameron, I just, I wanted to ask you, you had mentioned that you wanted the parking restrictions revisited. Were you talking about undoing the striping? I know you said you wanted to keep the striping.
No, not undoing the striping, yeah.
Were you talking about modifying the parking restrictions on one side or the other?
My view is that there is, there's peak traffic, which is, in the morning, it's going out of town, and in the afternoon, it's coming into town. And before we impose the parking restrictions, you couldn't park on Holly Street in the morning on the south side and on the north side in the afternoon. And that seemed reasonable. When we had the discussion a year ago, the argument was made, well, traffic is continuous all day long, which I, I've never really, I've never really felt that as I've driven, but I'll take staff at their word. But, but the vast majority of residents who are traveling the Holly corridor are either going out to get to work, or they're coming back in to get home, and they're my priority in terms of making sure that they have the least amount of traffic. So I was recommending that we return to the status quo, since the data showed the traffic times had not been reduced. If we wanted to go with the gentleman's suggestion that we just simply lift the restriction on the north side in the morning, you know, I'm open to that as well. I would just say, you know, as, as a father with two young kids, who is trying to load, you know, a four-year-old and a two-year-old into, into car seats in the middle of the street, and they're off, taken off, you know, I really empathize for folks when you're living on a busy street and you don't have access to your vehicle right in front of your house. I think it's a major issue for people. And if it caused like a huge improvement in traffic times, that's great, you know. I think then probably the trade off is warranted. But if you can't show that it reduces the time to get through the corridor, then how can you make the argument that you should take away people's parking? So I'm, I'm open to trying to lift the restrictions in such a way that it alleviates some of the burden that we've placed on them. And that can be done either by returning to the status quo or by, you know, making a somewhat less of a reduction. But I tend to agree that we don't really need to study this anymore. I think the data is there, and it's, if there's a majority that agrees, then we should do it, and if there's not, then, you know, we can move on to other things.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Bob?
Well, I was going to say, through the chair, then, but we're going to study it again, aren't we, when we start the, the construction project? Certainly, we have to do that, right? I mean, we're going to study it every time something changes, in my opinion, because that, I mean, that's what you guys are talking about. I mean, when they start that construction of that interchange, there's going to be heck to pay. I don't, and maybe our, our city public works person, you know, certainly indicates that the east side is going to be more than the west side, but the west side is going to be impacted too. Nobody's going to be speeding, nobody's going to be driving through there. There's going to be a whole nother thing. So I'm getting at, we're going to go look at it again, aren't we?
Well, listen, my general view of this, having talked about it for a long time, is that it doesn't, the traffic down Holly has nothing to do with how many lanes there are. It has to do with the bottlenecks on either side. And we're not alleviating the bottlenecks, so the cars just take as long as they take to get through. To me, changing the interchange is, we're going to do that anyway. I just, even if we're changing the interchange and people want to, I just think on the north side of the street in the morning, as the gentleman said, one car every seven seconds, it's not going to change whether or not the interchange is under construction or not. It's. interchange is under construction or not. It's, so I, I just think that it was a very reasonable argument that staff made when, when we did it a year ago. I personally didn't agree with it, but I thought it was totally reasonable. Then we went out and did the, got the data collection. The data shows there's no change. So I, I find it hard to, to say that, you know, you should continue to inconvenience folks when you don't have any data to prove it.
Through the chair, Matt?
I think we're getting a little off course here. I think the discussion, the thing I asked for is, let's have it agendized. Let's have staff look at it and give us a recommendation, especially in light of the data that was presented at Public Comment. And the time for the discussion and all the commentary on what we might do or might not do is if we agendize it. And that's all I'm asking for is to, you know, I'm looking for three council members or two other council members that would like to have this put on the agenda and then give staff the opportunity to take a look, make a recommendation, and give us a chance to discuss it. Because we really shouldn't be discussing too much about it right now. It's not on the agenda in that format, so.
Jay, as I recall, we did talk about this. I remember specifically asking you, should we change, should the westbound hours be different than the eastbound hours? I remember you and I had that discussion. I remember what your answer was, but I'm pretty sure you said it wouldn't make that much of a difference, or you didn't recommend it. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm just, I mean, you, you recall that, do you not? That we did talk about that?
Talked about it last year at this time when we were addressing the whole subject.
Right.
And my interpretation of the data was that there was enough of an increase in both directions to warrant having a uniform 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. In fact, one of the things that the data showed was the traffic is higher well past 6 o'clock, sometimes until 8:00 PM. And so really, there was a trade-off to say, okay, well, 6:00 PM, that gives residents an opportunity to be able to park in front of their homes in the evening after they get home from work because it's 6:00 PM. But the data would have supported restriction even longer into the evening.
Yeah, that I remember.
And I felt one of the drawbacks on the, the way it was set up originally was that it was inconsistent in both directions. And so it was not something in my mind that was predictable. And so that's why I recommended that, even though it was a little lower, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM on the westbound direction, I felt like it would be important to have a uniform set of parking restrictions. And, and then looking at that, even on the weekend, on Saturdays, we had high traffic volumes. But again, we, we recommended that the council would say, hey, Saturdays and Sundays is off. You guys have, get to park in front of your places on Saturday and Sunday, even though the data would support restricted hours on Saturday, if not on Sunday for some of the time. So that was sort of the way I looked at it in terms of how the data was, how we interpreted the data and what we recommended to you last year.
And do you still feel that, as you did last year, that, that we, I realize a lot of the things haven't changed, so the assumption would be that you would not make a recommendation that we change it. But I'm just wondering.
It's my opinion that the parking restrictions that have been put in place provide a good representative time during the day for traffic eastbound and westbound to traverse well. I would not recommend that we, we would move forward to relax that between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM on a westbound direction.
The signs that are on the westbound direction on Holly Street, is that, is that up on the structure? I thought I saw it. Is it before you hit the stop sign?
You're talking about the electronic sign?
Right, the electronic sign.
So the, the sign that faces the westbound direction is back adjacent to the 76 station on Holly Street. So, so as you're sitting at the signal at Industrial, looking across to Holly Street westbound, that sign sits on your right and it flashes, merge left, cars parked ahead. So it has two flashes that work. The sign that's for the eastbound traffic, there's nowhere to put it, either on the structure for the railroad tracks or when you cross the Old County Road intersection. So the first opportunity that we had to place that sign was right at that L'Oreola Park entrance point on the, the sign, the light post, because that's the area where the drivers begin their merge routine. Nobody merges prior to the intersection at Old County Road. So we felt like that was, as they come into that section of the street, they see that sign on the right, oh, okay, yeah, there's cars parked, I've gotta merge over. So that was our intent in terms of where we placed those two signs.
Does that sign say or have the capability of listing the hours?
It's not--
It's not set up that way?
It's not set up that way. The flashing, it's, it's meant more to be right now when you're driving down this street, there's cars parked ahead. And that's based on the hours of the day. And we've had a problem with the sign. This last weekend, it wasn't operational. And again, we're working the bugs out for the sign. The controller and the manufacturer are working with us on this. And again, we're trying to get that right so that we don't have that be something that's not reliable.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. All right. Any other comments on this? This is, this was a report to council. There's really no action that we're gonna take on this at this time. All right. Moving on to item nine, receiver presentation regarding greater east side neighborhood requests. Mr. Savay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Earlier this year, the City Council received emails from members of the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Group expressing concerns and proposing solutions to them. Ben Fuller, the president of the GSC Board, suggested utilizing community benefits obtained from private development projects to begin addressing needs the neighborhood had identified. A second email from board member Sam Hertzberg contained an extensive matrix of community concerns and potential solutions. In May of this year, the City Council directed staff to agendize a discussion of the matrix to provide an opportunity to discuss these issues with the community. And that's what brings us to this evening. Staff has worked with the GSC members to clarify and refine the matrix. The table has been prepared to show you, the table that I'm going to show you, and that's in your staff report, was prepared to show that the concerns are, what the concerns are, some of the proposed solutions, and the status of each project. And there's about 19 of them. As you will note, many of the GSC concerns are in the process of being addressed. And rather than going through each of these one by one in my presentation, the GSC has requested the opportunity to do a presentation to the council. So following that and any other public comment, we would be prepared to answer questions or to delve more deeply into the issues contained in this matrix. So what I'd like to do now is just move through the matrix and then revisit that at the council's direction or request. Lastly, staff has prepared a memorandum on community benefit strategies for the City Council consideration discussion. The memorandum outlines the benefits of the city of San Carlos and what we have negotiated in the past for large-scale development projects, as well as the improvement projects the city has undertaken to benefit the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood. The community benefit memo also notes that a number of neighborhood improvement projects have been completed in and around the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood, accounting to about 18.5 million in investment. So again, we're prepared to discuss that after further deliberation or discussion. And we're not recommending any particular action for the City Council this evening. We suggest council hear the GSC presentation and then discuss the concerns and potential solutions that have been submitted by the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood. And of course, that's up to you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. We thank you. And Jay Walter and I are available to answer any questions.
All right. Well, I'm not seeing any lights on. I wonder if Mr. Grisilli is gonna be back in a minute, but I, I don't see any lights on at the moment. So why don't we move to public comment? First speaker is Priya Joseph. She's still here?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd suggest we hear from the reps from the Greater East San Carlos Group before--
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, let's do that. Sorry, Sam. You have a presentation.
Yes.
Didn't mean to slight you. Get into a, I get into a pattern. Yeah, he's right here.
There he is. Okay. Perfect timing.
So this process began about last January, and there were a lot of concerns being raised in the community about various issues not getting resolved. And so we decided to have a workshop amongst ourselves to flesh out what are the outstanding issues that the community is concerned about. And one requirement of that workshop was that if you come with a problem, you must also come with a solution. So we tried to identify what are some of the problems. But before we get into that, we also wanted to backtrack and speak to you directly about some of your efforts that you've already done for us to help benefit us and to thank you for those efforts. We are very appreciative of East Side Connect. It's a project that's received a lot of neighborhood support, and we'd love to see it completed further to the south. But the improvements have been a very good improvement. We appreciate the compromises that the City Council made on the transit village, reducing the heightened density, and listening to the community about that. We appreciate all of the L'Oreola Park improvements that you've made so far, rehabilitating the ballfields, the playgrounds, and picnic areas. We appreciate you taking a stand about, on the high school proposed at the entrance to L'Oreola Park at Old County Road. We do have concerns about that. We've wanted that to become a part of L'Oreola Park for some time. Holly 101, and we do think that the impacts of the traffic are gonna be significant at that particular intersection. We appreciate the Holly 101 overpass with the pedestrian and bicycle lanes. I know there's some question about funding for, for that, whether the Transportation Authority, but we also appreciate that you're taking a stand on that issue tonight. We appreciate you listening to us about zoning improvements for adjacent developments, including a landscape buffer, moving density away from single-family residential homes. As land uses change, we transition to, to new developments as our neighbors. And we do appreciate you, the city, referring developers to our neighborhood board for early feedback as to what some of the community concerns could be. So it's not a surprise, and we appreciate that and the ability to collaborate with city staff. The permit parking south of Holly Street, I believe you've heard from a number of the residents south of Holly. The city's put forth considerable funding and effort. We do appreciate that effort. That was an outstanding concern for many years, and it's nice to see some resolution taking place, and we hope that's successful. We appreciate the dredging of, of the drainage behind homes on Fairfield, near the proposed Orchard Supply Hardware, and dredging the creek south of In-N-Out. It's been built up with sediment. It's the site of a 500-year flood zone. And if that could be ameliorated by unplugging some of that silt that's, that's taken place, it could improve the drainage should we have a real good El Nino this year. And moving the heavy trucks off of Holly Street to Britton, we really do appreciate that. You listen to the community. And that was a request of the residents in the community. We really appreciate you doing that. And we do appreciate the traffic light at Industrial and East San Carlos Avenue, which was a condition of the Landmark Hotel. And that was a request of the community. So sometimes we get accused of not saying thank you. And we wanted to say thank you and let you know we are paying attention to all you, that you do for, for our neighborhood and helping us improve ourselves. So what is community benefit zoning? And what's the benefit here? The east side, as you know, is, there's a lot of transitions that are happening around our neighborhood. We're 60, over 60-year-old neighborhood surrounded by industrial uses. We're really kind of unlike any other part of the city in that respect. And now with the economic boom that's happening, and it's a good thing that land uses are transitioning, but there's also a lot of concerns about, are we doing too much too fast? What's the impact? As you were just having the discussion about Holly Street and about the traffic impacts, all I can think of is, excuse me, in another one to three years, as all these developments take place, what's the traffic gonna look like at that point? You do have, when the east side, when the, the general plan was amended for the east side, it did specifically include language regarding the need to serve underserved communities. However, the general plan did not designate any communities in, in the city as underserved. And we think this was omission, and we believe that the east side should be identified as underserved in some respects, and we'll talk to that, that issue. We're, again, we're concerned about the cumulative traffic impacts from the construction, traffic generation, new projects, housing and business. And we know that you have suffered with the loss of the redevelopment agency capability. And there were, you know, promises that were kind of made to the city, to the community in prior city councils to do various things. And one of the ways we think that there may be an opportunity to accomplish some of the things that would be a benefit to all of the residents in San Carlos is to consider a community benefit overlay. So just wanted to briefly talk to Holly Street before I hand it over to Ben to finish. The residents of Holly Street spoke for themselves when they identified about 12 different issues for the City Council to consider. I think you've considered about five and added an additional one that wasn't on the list regarding garbage pickup, which was good. But there was some confusion about whether or not all the residents on Holly Street could all uniformly agree on, should you have a wider apron? Some of them have, can park two cars. Some of them can't. Some of them have adequate, you know, approach to their driveway. Some of them don't. Maybe a flashing light of some kind would, would notify people when cars were leaving. Maybe there's some kind of visual cue that the drivers need as much as the residents to get in and out of their driveways. Rita Fusaro, who's on your Traffic and Transportation Commission, has volunteered to knock on doors and to clarify with each individual resident, is there anything else that you still need? And if so, what is it that's unique to your property and your situation? So she's going to clarify that and then share that information with you. And so just want to let you know that she is a resident of Holly Street. She's on your Traffic and Transportation. She's talking to her neighbors. We're really concerned about, as Ben mentioned before, the Holly Street pedestrian crossing. When we did East Side Connect, we thought that the red brick across the, the crosswalks was gonna be kind of uniform as it is on the, on east side, East San Carlos from the train station and then other parts of the city. But Holly Street and Old County Road didn't get that same level. And we also think it may be a good idea, particularly if you change the, the time of the lights at El Camino. Give folks a countdown so that they know that it's time to cross, how much time they have to cross, maybe even the flashing lights in the, in the streets so that people know that there's pedestrians. I know, Cameron, being a father, when, when I had young kids, mine are now going to college, but I, I was very concerned for many years to let my kids walk to the park on their own because of the traffic at Holly Street. And it's still a concern. And just want to let you know, we are very supportive, and we've said this for many years, of a northbound Highway 101 alternative. If there's any possibility, personally, I think Harbor presents the greatest opportunity, but we're not closing the door on any suggestions at Britton, Branston, or Harbor. I know it's in negotiation with Caltrans, negotiation potentially with Belmont. But as long as we keep pouring traffic onto, to Holly Street, you know, we're gonna have some issues, particularly because people need to get northbound.
Not to mention when those 3,000 new workers come in at the Windy Hill Development, where are they gonna cross to the freeway from? So the last slides, we're gonna say something about Caltrain, and then we're gonna talk about kind of what we think would be next. And I do also want to say thanks to all you guys for all the things you have done. So Caltrain has been kind of a source of angst for all of us. You know, I think Dimitri's presentation brought it up really well. And I want to agree with him on the idea that we should all be working together. So hopefully we can make that happen. But the noise from the, the train, from the train announcers, the garbage is something that's been really hard to fix. A lot of that has to do with the-- A lot of that has to do with the landscaping, which is, you can't blow it, so there's cigarette butts everywhere. Shuttle still in Old County Road, vagrants and smokers everywhere. So, we really want to make that a better relationship over time. We've done a lot. We still have ways to go, so let's keep working on that. So, now we're going to talk about what the highest priority items are. This is sort of the, the thing that we really wanted to get to, but we had to tell you about the past first. So, L'Oriola Park is one possibility. Another possibility is a park on the north side of Holly. And a third possibility would be some sort of new park and perhaps it could be some sort of sporting complex. I put all three of these right next to one another because we want to talk, we realize that you guys have to have some options. So, let's talk about L'Oriola Park first. So, the high school, we know they purchased a land right next to it. We also are 100% clear with no doubt that they wanted to use L'Oriola Park as their schoolyard. Thanks to you guys, that doesn't seem to be happening right now, but we hear rumors that they're still trying to take over that park. We also have always asked for a park on the north side of Holly. The latest I heard is that the old firewood yard is now going to be a solar farm. I don't know if anyone can verify this, but that they've, they've applied to make it a solar farm where the billboards in the, the woodlot was. We always thought that'd be a great dog park or some additional park on the, on the, our side. The last idea is the idea of working with other folks in the community for new ball fields or some sort of sports complex close to greater east San Carlos. We know we're not going to get it all, so we want to give you guys some options. What we need is more green space. We've got 3,000 folks coming from this industrial development. We got 200 long-term hotel rentals and then we got 202 units at the Transit Villas, all going to our same park. And right now, today, you've got four teams practicing in every corner at all times. There's just no space in that park. So, finally, we want to improve the L'Oriola Park community building. Other high priority issues. So, safe pedestrian crossing at Holly and OCR. Al has mentioned a few times this idea of amalgamating or putting some sort of raised crossing alongside the train tracks. It's incredibly unsafe. Tim Hilborn's talked about having bollards. These are these sort of metal devices that are at the southeast and northeast corners of Holly Street, so at least you don't get hit by a heavy truck when you're standing there. I mean, I'm a grown man. I go across that thing every day and it's even unsafe for me. I can just imagine what it's like for kids. One of the other things that's been difficult for us is we've got these great new ball bouts, but it's hard to get them watered and it's hard to keep them clean. We saw on the staff report there that the city is committed to keeping them watered. I'm not sure when they're watering them, but it'd be great. And one of the other things is, how do we weed and keep these things clean? And we've added all this new real estate to greater east San Carlos and we're really excited about it, but now we just have to, the devil's always in the details. Reverse east San Carlos narrowing. So, some sort of business perk was obviously negotiated. We'd like to find out what happened, how that business perk was negotiated that made east San Carlos narrower. So, it's not a real street. You guys put all this excitement about this street and then you made it more narrow and trucks and buses and shuttles and cars can't get down there. And it's really unsafe for pedestrians who are all going to be walking from the new hotel to businesses in San Carlos. So, we want to work on that. And then the street sweeping Old County Road. Sam just got a nail in his tire on his, on his bike ride last week. It's just, it's really dirty on Old County Road and industrial.
Like car.
Oh, sorry. Nails, glass, rocks, garbage. We're really trying to figure a way to clean all this up. Code enforcement, Dimitri mentioned this, and east San Carlos businesses, I mean, it sounds like a nightmare. Thanks to Chris Valle, I guess you guys are starting to work on that. And then the last thing that we're really hearing about is people want to put housing on east San Carlos. And Ron, you mentioned affordable housing. Maybe this is a, a chance to marry it all in a one grand proposal. We have a couple second priority issues. These aren't top issues, but they're important. The utility boxes on Old County Road are pretty haggard looking. New covers, painting them, maybe reducing the footprint of them. There's no ball bat on Springfield. That was mentioned in the staff report, so I know you guys are going to look at that. Thank you for looking at that. Uniform noise. So, we want the same level of noise that's being used on Transit Villas and Landmark Hotel for development around the residential neighborhood. There's some crappy utility covers on Industrial and Holly, if you could make them flush. And then Paul Maginetti's favorite one, eliminate the hydrant and sidewalk on Holly near Old County Road. That was the same one that got hit recently by a truck and blew up and lost tens of thousands of gallons of water because it's just in such a bad place. So, I want to kind of end on one point. Cameron had mentioned that a lot of the community benefit zones are funded by the communities themselves. So, in other words, we would pay for our own benefits. Couple things on that. First of all, we've always been underserved. Parviz Maktari did a whole bunch of stuff for this town and one of which was left our area for 20 years, ADA noncompliant. So, we're, just, Eastside Connect got us up to the level. In addition to that, we actually feel like it's really unfair for us to pay for all these developments because we're getting impacted. So, what we're asking for are extrinsic benefits in addition to impact mitigation. So, there's going to be tons of impacts, but we can't mitigate them all like with Transit Villas. So, what can we get in return? Finally, you guys know that Black Mountain is coming up and we're being asked to fund Black Mountain. It's not like we're for or against that project necessarily, but it's, we all have limited money. So, for us to pay additional money to kind of start our own community benefit fund doesn't seem right. What might seem right is to take some of that development money, put it towards, you know, things in the neighborhood to bring it up to, so we're no longer underserved and then we can do all the right things by the community. So, we thank you so much for the dialogue. We thank you for your time for agendizing this issue. We really look forward to working with you guys. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks, Sam. All right. I think we're a little bit overwhelmed here for a second, so, I mean, there's, it's like, which one do you try first? Cameron.
Thanks, guys. I guess first I would say, you know, it's, I approach this as, you know, we want to try and improve the quality of life in every part of the city. And, you know, I think that the, the projects that you highlight are like worthy projects. I wanted to comment on a couple of them and ask staff a couple of questions. First, I'll just say on the Caltrain side, you know, last year I facilitated a meeting around shuttles. I, I would like to be, continue to be helpful on that. As you guys know, I'm now a member of the TA and spending more time with the Transit District. So, if we can, you know, we could get together and talk about some specific things. I, I did hear from staff that the kind of general custodial work around the train has been picked up. Is that, is that right? Could you just clarify what, how that has changed and when it changed?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. As it relates to the city's responsibility for the litter removal and landscape maintenance along the berm and in particular the area around the train station, we went ahead and increased, we had a once-a-week frequency for litter removal and landscape maintenance in that particular area. And we went ahead and with council's approval, we funded that for a second day. So, two days a week now, we have a crew that's assigned, that the contract crew goes out and takes care of the litter in and around our area of responsibility. They don't go up on the platform, they don't go underneath the area, which is Caltrain responsibility, but we have that area outside kind of along Old County Road along the berm.
That's great. And when did that go into effect?
Oh, that's probably been at least three months.
Okay.
It was spring when we did that.
And then I remember also hearing, just not to get too into the details, but we wanted to move some trash cans, we wanted to put up some no smoking signage, and I think we helped facilitate that even though it's on Caltrain property or something like that. Is there?
Yes, in fact, we did put the no smoking decals on all the benches in the area underneath and along the Old County Road frontage. And as well, we put a new trash can at the base of the ramp that comes down off the northbound side of the platform, down, comes down off the staircase there. I think that's it. And, and so, that's something that our contract crew empties when they service that area.
Well, I appreciate that. I hope that, you know, demonstrates we are trying to help on this stuff. If there's some incremental things that we can continue to improve, let us know. And then specifically on the Caltrain side, let's see if we can make some headway no promises.
Can we make one comment?
Yeah, go for it.
Just, that's wonderful. Thank you for adding additional.
Ben, come on up because this is being recorded.
We do notice a difference and we really appreciate, for example, the garbage can that was mentioned by Jay. The only challenge is the, and, and actually Michael Field of Windy Hill brought this up. So, the landscaping that's being used is bark and it can't be blown. And so, the suggestion was made that maybe we would change out the bark so that they could actually blow out the cigarette butts and stuff because it's very hard for them to do a thorough job. They do a much more thorough job in the area where there is no bark. And so, I don't know if that would be something that could be considered, Jay?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to address that, the, what the landscaping plan was for the ball bouts and?
Well, the landscaping plan was to add bark to all the ball bouts simply because that's one of the ways that you try to retain some moisture for the plants that are there. And yeah, indeed, the, you know, the cigarette butts and then probably some of the other trash will get caught in that bark. But, you know, one of the problems, if you eliminate the bark, then it maybe is less attractive. So, there's trade-offs in this kind of stuff. The, the bark over time probably is going to be, it's not going to be replaced as often. When it's brand new, it's lots of fresh new bark. So, that's kind of the issue.
A couple other quick comments. On the high school, I, I agree and that's why we sent the letter saying that we didn't think it was a great location for the high school. I would just point out to the neighborhood that, you know, we have limited legal authority. However, there is an election that's happening this year for the Sequoia Union High School District. It is a competitive election, which there are four candidates for three spots. So, I'd encourage you to reach out to those folks and find out where the candidates stand on that particular issue since it's a big, it's going to be a big issue for the high school district in the next couple of years. I wanted to ask staff about the L'Oriola Park building. Is that currently on the long-term budget for either rehab or replacement?
No, I believe it's still currently an unfunded project.
Okay. Go ahead.
There is one aspect of that that is, that is currently funded and that is replacement, actually installation of an actual air conditioning system for that building. So, we'll be upgrading the ventilation for that. Currently just has a heater and fans in there and so it can, as, as known by some folks who've had community meetings over there on a warm evening, get pretty hot and stuffy in there. So, that is definitely an improvement. That's already budgeted and planned for probably within the next nine months it'll take place.
Okay. That's great. And, you know, we've talked about kind of having a longer budget cycle or a series of budget hearings. I'd be interested to know kind of from the Park and Rec Department and Public Works kind of where that building stacks up in the relative priority list when we get there in the next, you know, six months and just try to understand it because it's a, I think we get a lot of use out of that building and I think there's a lot of opportunity to improve it. Lastly, I mean, I have some other things, but I'll let other folks talk. I'll sort of second the concerns about east San Carlos Avenue. I, I really don't know exactly what happened there. I think the, it predates my time on the council, but having looked at the satellite Google map, it seems a little odd that you've got kind of the sidewalk jutting out into the street and, and I, I don't know if that was the result of a compromise or. So, I, I mean, I don't know if, I'd be interested to hear from my colleagues if there's any institutional memory on why that is the way it is or, or, and I, and I don't know, given that we just put a bunch of money into creating a sidewalk there, whether it would make sense to change it. But it does seem a bit odd to me, so I'd be interested in learning more about that. And I'll, I'll let others ask questions. But I, I don't know if you, if you want to go ahead and answer it, Jay?
Yeah, thank you. That's probably a good idea. No, I don't want to stay up here. I want to sit down. It actually predates my time with the city, but as we began, as I got here, we were, we were, you know, very close to being complete with the design on Eastside Connect. And it had that, we'll call it a strange configuration, which has that sidewalk that runs from, basically from Bayport on down to Industrial on the south side, but it accommodated the, the, we call it the perpendicular parking there rather than the parallel parking for those businesses. And that's the entry points to some of their, their buildings, you know, garages and those kind of things. And as I understand it, the original concept had been to have that be a straight shot sidewalk on the one side. There was pushback from the businesses about losing the parking in front of their, their businesses. And then, from what I understand, there was pushback from the neighbors on the north side of east San Carlos Avenue who did not want a sidewalk directly adjacent to their backyard. So, that's why on that stretch of road right now, you have on the north side, it's just curb and gutter and then there's a, maybe it's eight to 10 feet of space. It has some utility poles and some things like that as you work your way on down, but there's no sidewalk and then the backyard fences. So, it's an, it's an interesting configuration, the way it worked out, but I think it was a series of compromises that were reached after the original concept had been that there would have been more or less a uniform width all the way down through there and even a traffic signal at Industrial and east San Carlos.
So, it sounds like a thorny problem to unwind, I guess would be my, my assessment of it. You know, the neighborhood has brought up concerns about safety, just of the narrowing of that intersection. Is the staff aware of any problems, any safety-related problems on that street thus far?
Not as, as far as we've been made aware. Obviously, there's been observations of folks who feel that it's too narrow. I think the, the, the shuttles that run kind of down that street, that's really where we wanted them to go. Either that or further to the south where they would go through one of the industrial areas or Britton to get to kind of back over towards the east side. But as it relates to the city's vision for that street, we're calling it a bicycle boulevard. So, we do want it to be pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly and we don't want it to be something that is hazardous for vehicles. And so, I think that ultimately we will have to address some of that. But I think for right now, I think it functions in the way that it was intended, at least the way that it got built. So, I, I've not been made aware of any serious safety concerns. We remedied one at the intersection of Bayport and east San Carlos when the stop signs were turned and faced, you know, against the other street.
Yeah.
And we corrected that right away. And I think that certainly has been a help for, for that location.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate the, the background. I'll reiterate that it seems like a thorny problem, so I'll let others speak.
Matt?
Jeff.
Oh, Jeff, did you want to chime in?
I was just going to remind the council, I believe there are other public speakers on this item, so I don't know if you want to hear from them before you really launch into your own.
I had not forgotten about them, but I just thought that since there were questions of staff, I thought maybe we ought to get these out of the way and then take public comment. Matt?
The question I have is, it seems like one of the major requests here is this community benefit zoning. And if I understand what's being asked, is something that would allow a way to gather funds and then spend those funds on the community as a benefit, correct? So, you know, the staff knowing that this presentation was going to be given, I don't, I don't know how soon they, how soon you guys saw some of this information, but the question is, do we know of any other communities that have done this or would we be inventing something new? Do we know the legality of it? It seems like an interesting idea. It's, it reminds me a little bit of redevelopment agency, but of course that has gone away. But the reason I say it reminds me of redevelopment agency is it sounds like what they're saying is, let's take some of the tax, the tax increase that would come from property development. Obviously, those properties would be taxed at a higher rate, you know, if you're building new and assign some of that revenue that the city would get to this community benefit zoning, if I got that right.
I mean, I'm prepared to get into a lot of detail about the community benefits ordinance, but let's just, I guess I'll cover a couple of the questions that you had or ideas. And it's not about a tax. Community benefit ordinance or program is about only when a developer wants to do something more than the development standards. For instance, the developer, if you have a 50-foot height, they want to go to 60 or 80 feet. So, what a city would do is determine what's the economic value that you're giving to that developer and you'd come up with a list of things in the community you wanted to do. And then that, that money would be spread throughout the, the city in certain ways and you'd have to identify what those ways are. So, it's not a tax. It's very specifically related to specific things. And there's pros and cons with doing that. In Silicon Valley, most cities do a thing called negotiated agreements or development and disposition agreements, which the city of San Carlos has used very effectively for many years. And the only other city in San Mateo County that has adopted a program is the city of Redwood City. They just did that in the last year. Typically, community benefit ordinances or programs are for big cities that are experiencing tremendous growth and, and things like that. So, that's sort of in a quick nutshell. Now, that being said, if, if you wanted to attack certain issues or, or problems, there are other funding mechanisms that we have in addition to our negotiated development agreements already on the table, for instance. For instance, you have parkland dedication fees that are taken in for residential development projects. Those parkland dedication fees are to be used for the acquisition or improvement of our parks. And one example of that is something the council did as part of the Transit Village project, as you said. We're going to take the park dedication fees from that project and allow it to only be used in the, on the greater East San Carlos neighborhood, and I think it was between $300,000 and $400,000. So, that's, that's one example. Another example is, you have a traffic impact fee. I know that traffic is, is an issue that you've discussed a great deal this evening. Traffic impact fees, we have it on the books. We extract those fees. For instance, PAF was about 1.1 million. You have a list, so you have a plan for what you are going to use those funds for, and you have the authority, as, as far as I know, to take that plan, reevaluate it, and apply those funds in any way you see, with the advice of your, of your staff, to be used. Same thing with your Parks Master Plan. If you wanted to do something at L'Oriola Park, it does talk about the building at L'Oriola Park in your Parks Master Plan. It all, I think it also may discuss acquisition of parks. So, you have, I think what we have as a community is, we have the, the foundation in place. It's just a matter of identifying the issues and how you want to solve it, and then we have the funding mechanisms in place. These, the idea of a community benefit ordinance is maybe a good idea for a really big city, and again, I can get into all the details of that. But the smaller communities tend to use negotiated agreements, because it offers you more flexibility. And you can do things like you did at the Transit Village. Some of these community benefit ordinances will limit your ability to say, hey, this neighborhood has a specific problem, because what the, the laws encourage cities to do is do something community-wide. So, in a nutshell, I know that was long-winded, but I hope I answered some of it.
Yeah, and I don't want to get too long-winded. We have another agenda item, and I think it's going to take some time. But I wanted a clarification then.
Sure.
Because it seemed, what, what I heard being presented tonight was, we're a underserved community on the east side, and almost like, again, like we did with redevelopment agency. We, we did a boundary, and we said, any new development that happens in this zone, we're going to take a tax increment and put it towards the redevelopment agency, so that we can continue to do these projects. The idea being, when that was all created, I'm not sure what year that was, but the idea was, you're taking a blighted community, and you're saying, any development that happens within this blighted community, we're going to plow some of the tax benefit of, of these redeveloped properties back into that area to raise it up. And that's what I heard these guys saying tonight, is, we're taking the brunt of the development, we're underserved, can't there be a way that we can mirror that type of law that we used to have, where any development that happens in, on the east side, we're going to take a portion of the income and not spread it all over town, but specifically spend it on the east side? Is there a law that prohibits us from doing that kind of thing?
No, absolutely not. It's just a, yeah, there's no law that would prohibit you from doing something like that, no.
Okay. And so, Mr. Mayor, you know, as we finish up this subject, I'd like to revisit that, because I think that's something that would be worthy of having on the agenda, if there's two other council members who are interested in it.
Okay. Mark? Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jay, a question for you, following up on the discussion you were having with Cameron about East San Carlos Avenue. My understanding of the history of some of those compromises that were made is, as you pointed out, they were a function of the established businesses that are there and had been there for many years. Prior council, as I recall, changed the zoning rules for that section of San Carlos, and basically made it a combination, like residential-commercial opportunity. Another, it, that actually may be a...
Probably better for Al, yeah.
Yeah. But here's what I, here's what I was looking to get at. My question is this. I would presume that the compromises that we made involving the particular businesses, that as those businesses turn over, the property use gets changed, which is what the council is hoping to do with the changes to the zoning ordinances that were made, I presume we will revisit the issue of those compromises. In other words, that we're not going to just say, oh, yes, they're, they're used, we used to allow perpendicular parking here for, for, as a compromise, but we no longer really need that for this new business or new land use. We're going to revert that to something more typical.
That would be my recommendation, is, say, a plan or a potential development came in and asked for feedback on, what should we do along the frontage of that street? Yeah, I think we would want to revert that back to a more traditional way of having that curb aligned on that one side.
And Al, I realize this may have been a joint question. Would you concur with that observation? Since it's a land use issue as well?
Yeah, I would definitely concur with that. And also, as Jay mentioned, on the other side of the street, maybe revisiting the issue with the, the neighbors there, because there is 10 feet of public, that's public right-of-way, isn't it, Jay? If you drive down the street, it's, it's like, well, why isn't there a sidewalk on that side? It's a straight shot. I understand, you know, and I was around during the time of those discussions, and, you know, maybe it's just reopening that issue.
Well, in fact, you anticipated my next question. That's the one part of the history that I wasn't familiar with. Why, what was the objection to having sidewalks between basically a backyard fence and a road?
You know, it's just human nature, right? I mean, people just didn't want to have, you know, people walking, you know? I mean, you could say that perhaps there's security or safety issues, so that, that, you know, could have been some of the issue. But I think that, you know, if you looked at it more closely, and in terms of the design and safety issues, you could probably design something that was acceptable to, to the neighbors.
Just, this is a very minor issue, purely personal point of view. I wouldn't mind seeing that issue revisited, because that might help relieve some of the other admittedly oddball configurations with that street, which it sounds like at least some elements of the community today would prefer be shifted.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I was going to say, I do understand why the residents whose backyards face East San Carlos might object, because my grandfather used to live along, he used to live, he used to live on a corner in Alameda, and he had a side fence that went along the sidewalk, and he constantly complained about people walking along, throwing things over his fence, and he was always cleaning out people's wrappers and beer cans and that sort of thing. So, all I'm saying is, I understand why they, not that we shouldn't revisit it, but I do understand some of the concerns people had.
Well, it just presumes they don't have stronger arms nowadays, Mr. Mayor.
I just had a couple, couple of questions. Jay, I guess this is for you, just a couple of minor things. There was an issue on there about LED lights being too light, or too bright, rather, on, I think it was Old County Road. Is that just a matter of adjustment?
It's actually just a matter of shielding the fixture, and we got one request to do that, and we took care of it. So, as, and we do that all over the city. We have LED fixtures that are up, and, and we will shield when a resident requests, because it's shining too brightly into the house or otherwise.
Right. Okay. And then the other thing was, is that, we've spent a lot of time on East San Carlos Avenue. Are there going to be any changes to the street that will be as a result of the hotel development? I know there will be a light there, but will there be any other changes to sidewalks or anything at the industrial end of it to accommodate a more, you know, heavy traffic volume? Because I would assume with a light, you're going to have more people traveling, traveling down that street.
I think it's going to be configured largely the same way as it is now, because primarily, we're getting rid of several of the, the current developments and uses that are there for, in favor of the hotel. So, there, there will still need to be some truck traffic that will have to be accommodated in there, but I don't believe that it's going to be significantly wider than it currently is. One of the things that Al has worked to achieve is to be able to get a, a public access from that point in Industrial back to the, basically to the freeway fence, because our plan is that bicycle boulevard crosses there, goes to the end where the, it busts through the freeway fence, and then connects to the POC that we're going to have over Holly, or over the freeway at Holly Street. So, that is going to be one aspect of that, there will be more pedestrian bicycle access back through there. And then, of course, the hotel frontage will have the, the regular landscape and frontage improvements that they have to build as part of it.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Cameron?
I had a follow-up question for Al on the community benefits program. So, I, you mentioned Redwood City, and while you were talking, I just kind of perused what Redwood City is doing. I just want to make sure I understand what's happening in Redwood City as an example. It looks like they're saying, you know, if you want to develop above and beyond what the land use currently allows, then you have to pay into certain programs. And, but those, those are just general predictable fees targeted towards specific areas, and they say affordable housing, parks, transportation, schools, art, and et cetera. There doesn't seem to be any, any reference to targeted towards a specific neighborhood in Redwood City or a specific area. It's just saying that the funds are dedicated towards those uses. Is that your understanding?
At this point, that's where it is in Redwood City. I mean, they could do that in the future, perhaps. Lastly, I think the one thing to consider is, those community benefit ordinances only apply to developments that go above your development standard. So, let's say everybody developed to the standard, you wouldn't get those community benefits.
And essentially, what you're saying is that what we've done in the past is negotiate those.
Yes.
And that an alternative is to just set it as an ordinance, and then it's very predictable for developers, and they realize, you know, what they likely have to pay to exceed the zoning.
Yes. So, there, there's some predictability, but there's less flexibility on both sides.
Okay. But are you aware of an example of where there's a geographic tie to a specific neighborhood, or...
We'd have to do more research on that. I'm not aware of that in this, in this area. There may be some in other parts of the country, or San Diego, I think, has one. Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
All right. Sorry to make people wait so long, but we have a few speaker cards. Priya? By the way, Priya, you listed three items. 10A spin continued? Okay.
So, really quickly, I really believe that a city gets the council it deserves. A section of the community gets the representation it gets, and people tend to assert, et cetera. I don't want to get into the details of it. All I know is, I have received, you know, 10 emails in the time I have sat here, saying, who represents, you know, them in Holly? So, I would say, reach out to Holly residents directly. On the east side, Jen, you know, the, the presentation that was done here, I would say, go and look at next door, the responses you see there. So, take them into account. I would say, make it official to add those comments into public comment. So, I really believe, you know, it's one city. I really get nervous when you start, you know, it trends towards segregation, so I would, you know, I would really caution against all these, you know? It's great to get, you know, benefits back, but to have an oversight community that's in bed with some people, and, you know, it just makes me highly nervous. I just want to say that. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. David McClellan?
Thank you. I just wanted to expand on what Ben Fuller was talking about in regards to a sports field complex. I'm a dad, and I'm a coach, and I've reached out to a number of organizations here in San Carlos, and we have come to the conclusion that we do not have enough sports fields here, notwithstanding all the hard work that San Carlos does to divvy up sports fields and try to find accommodations for, you know, all the different kids here in town. So, one of the things that we would like to propose, and Ben already did, but I would like to reiterate, is a sports, a multi-sports complex. We think that it is not only needed, but it's feasible, and it's affordable, when you consider other options that we have. And I don't know if there's anybody else here that is going to speak, but I asked some of the other people to come. But we're going to continue to work on this issue, and we'll let you know and keep you informed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, David. And Tim Hilburn?
First of all, I just want to thank, say thank you for hearing our, our presentation. The first thing I want to say is, is going back a little bit historically to the Transit Village. One of the big cells that we got, especially from Al Savay when we first met him and were going through, was, hey, you're going to get, you know, a lot of pass-through money from, from the RDA. And about eight, eight months to a year before the RDA was taken away by Governor Brown, I sent Al an email saying that we are going to lose the RDA. The writing was in the, you know, writing was on the wall. And, you know, coincidentally, we did lose the RDA. I think right now, there's a huge disconnect between what the city perceives as income and potential income from developers, and where that money goes to, and what we had as an RDA agency. And we've kind of lost that concept, and I think we need to bring that back and find out and find ways and solutions of really serving our community and the underserved parts of the community. And I think doing that is by establishing a, you know, some, some kind of overlay that, that is used with developers. I think we need to be very careful in just saying that we, we're just going to do negotiations with incoming developers. I think we need to think out of the box and really look at some other alternatives. Right now, Foster City is considering a, a tax or some kind of, I'm not sure if it's a tax, but basically for new developers that are coming in, that are going to be actually paying possibly for affordable housing. So, there's a lot of ways that this, this council can look at doing this. And I just think right now, there's a huge disconnect, and we do need to find a way to fund some of these things that we've been talking about. The last thing I just want to say is, I'd really like to, for you guys to look into the high school at the park and what they're doing with that, and also the easement that comes from Old County Road into the park. And if the high school insists on building there, I would like us to at least look legally at whether or not the city can limit the high school of using that easement. So, I think that's something that we should really look into. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Okay. All right. I think, anybody else? I don't see any other requests to speak. I think we're, we're looking at a motion here. So, or a, I see a, I move too, so that's what I was wondering, so... Matt?
So, I'd like to bring up again, I'd really be interested in having a, a gendized item to look at a community benefit zoning program, to look, look at the ins and outs of it, and, you know, see what council might be willing to consider in that regard.
All right. Anybody else have similar thoughts?
Well, I don't support that, but I think, you know, since folks came all the way down here and gave a presentation, they deserve to hear why. First, I want to say, I really appreciate the dialogue. This has been a contentious relationship over time, and it, it always pains me that it's a contentious relationship, because, you know, we're, one of the things San Carlos prides itself on is that we're a very close-knit community. And I, I would really like to see a more integration into the larger community and less dissension, and I know there's a lot of legitimate issues that people can disagree on. I've done a little bit of research, Ben knows this, on community benefit district, community benefit zoning. I think we're conflating kind of two concepts here. There's what's been done, Ben has pointed out, in the Dog Patch, a lot of other places, which is kind of a, a, what do we call it? A business improvement district, which is where you draw a line around a specific geographic territory, and you say, hey, we're going to assess ourselves beyond what the current tax rates are, so that we can pay for local community benefits. And that's done in a lot of places, and it's really targeted towards specific areas, and it's usually business-led. And then there's this idea of this community benefit zone, or what do you call it? Basically, a community benefit program where you're, where you're focusing the money and allowing businesses to exceed the zoning towards... to exceed the zoning towards specific uses and providing predictability, but it's not targeted towards a specific area. It's targeted towards parks, or arts, or transportation. The kind of thing that you guys are proposing, which is specific uses in a specific area, I've never seen an example of it. And we are a very small city. We have shown, you know, and was shown in the project, or in the presentation today, that, you know, we've invested in the community, we're going to continue to invest in the community. And that's really just an ongoing dialogue and negotiation. But if we, we'd have to create a completely kind of unprecedented, as far as I can tell, unprecedented and unique tax structure. And you would be kind of binding the hands of the discretion of the council, where we have a relatively limited capital budget, and we only do certain projects every year, in a way that I think doesn't make a lot of sense. So anyway, all I'm saying is, I just wanted to say, you guys came all the way down here. If I'm saying that I don't want to agendas, and I thought you wanted to know why, but I appreciate you doing it, and we should keep talking.
Thanks, Cameron. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've shared with Ben and Sam several times over the last few months my reasons for not supporting the idea of a community benefit district, but for the benefit of everybody else, I'll summarize them here, and I'll actually offer an alternative, which I think would be more consistent with the way San Carlos does things and the way this council has operated in the past. My biggest concern is something Cameron kind of touched on. We are a small community. We are a single community. I view myself as representing, to the best I can, everybody in San Carlos. And that includes the roughly 5% of the San Carlos residents that live east of the berm, and the 95% of San Carlos residents that live west of the berm. I look to represent all of them. And the delegating funds to, limited public funds in particular, to a particular area of town, however noble the intentions are, in my mind, creates the very significant risk of balkanizing San Carlos. I mean, what do I do when the folks from White Oaks, or Cameron's neighborhood, or my neighborhood, or somebody else comes in and says, hey, we've got some particular issues we have to deal with here, give us some of the money too. I'd like to think that we have a good forum for discussion here. I actually think, as I mentioned earlier, there's a way to formalize the process a little bit more. Rather than set up a community benefit district, I'd like to see us commit ourselves to ensuring that every time there's a development that's going to have an impact on the east side, that we specifically direct staff to ask, to present some options to us on how, as Al has talked about, money could be divvied up and assigned to particular projects in the east side, or just assigned in general to the east side. We do have such things as reserve accounts. I'm not necessarily a huge fan of them, but they're a way of signaling, well, yes, the council can pull the money out of this in an emergency, but our intent is to spend it on improving quality of life on the east side, or specifically perhaps parks on the east side, or whatever it is that we want to do. That's what I'd rather see us do than community benefit districts. I'd rather see us formalize what we pretty much do mostly already, and set aside money on a project-by-project basis, and make that part of our decision process. So that's my thoughts.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Bob?
I concur with, I concur with Councilmember Olbert and Councilmember Johnson. I think as each project comes before me, or the way I look at it, is where is it, and what is it going to be impacting? I think we did it with the Transit Village. Assuming that a large office complex, Wendy Hill, comes in, that's going to be one of the highest priorities, I think, of all of us, to look at that. It's going to be one of where can, where are the impacts going to be, and where can we benefit there. I agree, again, on the balkanization concept. I just think we have to look at this as one picture. And if there are items that are designated in a certain area, then we have to look at, see what kind of, what kind of things are going to happen in that area, and how we can affect it. So I concur that I'm not necessarily in favor of a specific community benefit zone. And as Councilmember John said, I've never seen it either. And I've done some building around, but never seen that before. We've had fees and added-on fees for, you know, traffic, and housing, and art, and whatever I've paid in my career, but never seen one specifically for that. So.
All right. Thanks, Bob. I'll just add a couple of my thoughts. We've been looking at lots of ways to fix all the things that need to be fixed in San Carlos for a long time. And of course, you know, most of us have been on here long enough that with the help of the east side, we have developed a very deep knowledge of what the needs are. But if you look back at the way this town has been for the last 15 years, and you look at it today, if you took a snapshot of what this town was like 15 years ago, and you compared it to today, not a heck of a lot has changed, structurally, you know. There's, maybe there's that Arata building. That's about it. And we lived through a, actually, in the last 15 years, two recessions. So not a lot of development happened. Not much has happened. But it's about to happen. And there is a lot of development that's interested in coming into this town. And I don't want to suggest for a minute, that's not going to affect the east side. It is going to affect the east side. But we're going to have the financial capability, moving forward, to forge these independent agreements, these negotiated developments, so that we can, we can take those funds and put it where it's needed. And it is true, most of that needy area is the east side at this time. So almost by default, a lot of that money's going to go for the east side. But that won't always be the case. There will be a time when, I always like to say, I live in White Oaks, we don't have storm drains. We don't have a storm drain system in my neighborhood. I don't want a situation where I can't access or the council, because I probably, I can guarantee you, I won't be on the council by the time storm drains come to White Oaks. But I don't want a future council's hands tied by something that they have to follow and can't not follow unless they undo the ordinance. So I like the idea, but I think we can accomplish pretty much the same thing, because we know what the issues are. And you've been very good at telling us what those issues are. We're already making progress on a lot of them. And I would, and I would like to think that we're going to make more progress. Just a little note on residential in East San Carlos Avenue, if you look at a map, I completely agree. It just looks out of place. And if I could wave a magic wand, I'd make it all go away tomorrow. But that area is zoned, potentially for residential. I think it's even zoned, if they, if some developer came in and wanted to put single-family homes there, they could. But that's really a long-term issue, and it's something that's not going to be solved in the next year, or two, or five, or maybe even 10. It's going to happen over time, as developers decide that maybe they don't want to have a commercial enterprise there. Or some developer's going to come in and say, you know what, I could build a lot of affordable housing in there. Or I could build a lot of mixed use, or I could build a lot of, I could build a big condominium project and make it profitable. So that's going to turn over, who knows? It might happen in 10 years, it might not happen for 20. It's not something that, you know, we can really force as a council. But when the opportunity presents itself, we can probably have a lot to say as to how we encourage that change to happen. So my final point is, I think, I think I made it. I think the future is looking much better than the past, and we need to think in terms of what we're going to be able to do, based on all these decisions that have been made by the last two or three councils. And I think we're going to be positioned very well to make a lot of improvements that everyone in the east side, and actually, all over town wants, because I keep reminding myself that I was elected to serve 29,000 people. And I try to keep that in mind at every council meeting. Sorry to be so long-winded. Mark, you had a final comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, a few minor ones. First off, I feel for your situation with storm drains. My community, we have one. I'd be happy to share it with you, if you have some water you ever want to put down.
My storm water over.
Yeah, you bring your storm water over. I also will mention in passing that you rattled off a number of things, which, to me, are actually closely related to that issue I brought up at the beginning of the meeting about how development occurs, and the timeframe of development, and some of the issues and constraints, which I'm glad you did, and it sort of highlights the reason why I think we need to do a better job of educating people on those things, because I don't think a lot of people understand them. The main thing I also wanted to say, just as my opinion, advice to staff, we didn't necessarily address every single item that was on the suggestion list. I very much want staff to incorporate all of that into their thinking. I know a lot of things have been already in process or potentially in process. But if nothing else, I view this as an excellent opportunity to gather some frontline data on how a number of residents in our community feel about their section of town. And so we should definitely incorporate that into our thinking. I'm confident that you'll do that, but I just wanted to remind you, you know, just in case you didn't think of it yourself. So, thanks.
Okay. Well, Jeff, did you have a comment?
I was just going to respond to Mark's comment, and just let him know that we will be doing that. We've already had some meetings with folks from the GESE about these items. We'll be programming, and some of them are, you know, great projects. Some of them have been talked about a long time. We'll be programming them into the five-year capital budget as we move forward and following up on these things. Some of them are related to projects, some of them are already in process and are happening. So we'll continue to work on the list. We'll continue to look for opportunities. You know, sometimes things occur to us that are beneficial to the neighborhood, and we reach out and get them started, and the neighborhood didn't think about it. And sometimes, things occur to them that didn't occur to us, and it works vice versa. You know, I can't really speak to the long-term history between the city and the neighborhood. These things tend to ebb and flow. Sometimes the neighborhood can be very vocal, and at times even disagreeable with the city. And in my experience, that makes them exactly not at all unique from any other neighborhood in San Carlos. When they have issues, we hear from our neighborhoods. And, you know, we're happy to do that. You don't go to work for a city, you don't run for city council, because you don't want to solve problems in your community. You get involved in this type of work and put yourselves in this position, because you really do want to make a difference. And having a neighborhood that's interested in making themselves better, and interested in working with their elected officials and the staff, is a resource. It's absolutely a benefit, and that's how we see it. And I'm just going to end on this one note, and I've said this before privately, but I don't know that I've ever said it publicly. I really hate the term "east side," because it leads to the term "west side." And I don't hear, when I'm talking to individuals in this community, regardless of where they live, these differences. But they tend to come out in this forum. Historically, this neighborhood has been called the L'Oriola neighborhood. And, you know, just some food for thought in the future. You know, we're working very well together. I think that's going to continue. I think we're on an upward trend. And, you know, maybe it's time for a change in the dialogue and some of the terminology we use, too, so that, you know, we recognize that, you know, we're one community. This is your city staff up here, this is your city council, as much as anybody else in this community, regardless of where you live. You know, there's houses on the east side that are worth more than some houses on the west side, and, you know, there's certainly some houses on the west side up in the hills that are worth an absolute fortune compared to almost every house in the city. Those aren't issues that concern the city staff, they're not issues that concern your elected officials. And you guys did a great job in your presentation tonight, so thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Hold on just a second. One thing I, and I apologize, I needed to ask this earlier, was, Jay, maybe you can answer this. The issue of the countdown timer at El Camino and Holly, is that, is that part of the Transit Village project? Is that something they're going to install? Because we see them all over now.
The condition is, I remember it is pedestrian improvements at that intersection. So that, to me, is a pretty simple addition that could be made to the signal equipment that's there. So we'll look into that right away. So I think, to me, that's one of the ones that, it's like a plug-and-play kind of thing.
Yeah.
Works easy, yes.
Yeah. Okay, that'd be great. Thanks. Okay. Sam, you want to make a comment? And then we're going to move along.
I very much appreciate Jeff's comments about we're all one city. In terms of the feeling of east and west, well, it actually started when the berm went up, and the city was divided physically by that separated boundary. And the east side is just unique with the industrial uses, and so we certainly want to be as integrated with the entire city as possible. And we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Okay. We are back to Matt's original motion?
It wasn't a motion, it was just, I was looking for consensus, and it looks like we didn't get it, so.
All right. So then, I guess we don't have a motion then. Right? Okay. All right. Okay, moving on to 9B. Receive a presentation regarding the proposed 2016 solid waste rate options and commercial recycling efforts, and provide direction to staff. You don't want to stay for the solid waste rates? Always happens.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director for this item tonight. And, Yvette, if you will bring that one back up, that would be great. The background one first would be good. Nope, I'm sorry, the other one. My bad, my instructions are faulty. So tonight, we have a study session on solid waste rates. And for the council, this process sort of kicks off the 2016 solid waste rate discussion. And so this is fresh off the decision that was made at the SBWMA board meeting last week, as it relates to the revenue requirement for 2016. And so tonight, we want to talk about that, essentially, kind of what our, what we're seeing as the revenue needs for 2016, and what that tells us about what we see the rates as they need to be. We also want to have our, one of our consultants talk to you about the study, the analysis that he's done, as it relates to residential and commercial revenues versus the costs, and the potential Prop 218 impacts of that. And also, continue some discussion on residential cart rate alignment. And then we also have tonight an update on the commercial recycling status here for the city of San Carlos, and that will be our agency representatives from SBWMA who will be making that presentation. So I'll kick us off and essentially let you know where we are with this, as it relates to the process. We have a collections contractor, Recology, and then there's a disposal contractor, which is South Bay Recycling. Both of them submit their rate applications for the upcoming rate years to SBWMA, our joint powers authority, 12 agency members, for review. That gets reviewed, the agencies make their reviews and comments, and then that is sent to the SBWMA board for approval, which, as I mentioned, was last week. And then each agency sets their own annual rates. And so for us, we will be setting that discussion for October 26th. So tonight, what we'd like to get from you is feedback, direction, what should we be looking at, what are the things that you want to see at this meeting, because that essentially is the meeting that we will then set our Prop 218 hearing for trash rates, in the need that we have to increase rates. So as we look at the 2016 revenue requirement, as a reminder to council, there's always three years involved in the process for determining how much is actually necessary from the revenue requirement. So as we look at it for the, what's coming up in 2016, there is an estimated surplus. And you can see that on the screen, that is literally $26. How they come up with that exact number, I'm not sure, based on, you know, almost $100 million in revenue requirements overall, the agency.
I thought you were going to say it was in the thousands, but it was actually $26.
It's not. So Councilmember Grisilli, you'll cover $26. We appreciate that. So as it relates to that, the, for us in the city of San Carlos, our estimated, estimated surplus amount is going to be about $380,000, which by and of itself just means that if nothing else changed, we wouldn't have to go forward with a rate increase for 2016. But that's not the end of the story. So what I'd like to do is bring up Alex Handler's, he's a principal from Bardewells and Associates. He's the one who did our rate analysis, and have him go through a presentation with you tonight. And I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions that will, that will come out of that, as he's a real numbers guy. So, Yvette, if you wouldn't mind. Clicker's there, we'll get your presentation. Oh, great. Thank you. Nice to see you all again. It's been a while. I haven't been in your new
It's been a while. I haven't been in your new council chambers since you've redone them. Great, thank you. Okay, and I'll try to move through this relatively quickly. I know you've been here discussing a lot of issues. Really, I want to talk about this little background on your sewer, your solid waste rates, why they are the way they are, talk about some legal requirements and evolving understandings of the legal requirements, and show you some kind of updated rate calculations we came up with preliminarily, and what some options are for implementing those. Again, study session, we're here to take input, so when we come back, we could reflect your input and additional input from staff. Background, you serve about 8,600 homes, 1,200 businesses. Your rates are set to recover the overall cost of service. So, you've received some analysis over the years from Rethink Waste that, yes, your rates are recovering the cost of service, but they're might not be in perfect alignment with the cost of service, with residential rates in general being a little bit below the cost of service, commercial rates a little bit higher than the cost of service based on this draft analysis from Rethink Waste. And within residential rates, charges for smaller cart sizes being below cost of service and for the larger cart sizes historically potentially a little bit above the cost of service according to the analysis. You already recognize this, you've already been modifying your residential rates. In recent years, you've actually cut the rates for the largest cart sizes. There have been no rate increases in the last two years other than those rate decreases, and it looks like there's no need for another rate increase this year, which is good. Our objectives, kind of provide an independent review on this, come up with some cost justification to support what we think the rates should be in alignment with what the current understanding is of Proposition 218, what that means for your property-related charges. And we'll talk about a few alternatives. I'm going to skip over this because I think everyone in this, well, maybe not everyone, most of the folks in this room are familiar with how, what the key players are in this, and Jay just mentioned it real briefly. Kind of as a basis for your current rates, I think some of it dates back to the California Integrated Waste Management Act of 1989, which required agencies to divert a large chunk of their solid waste, 50% by the year 2000. So, what a lot of agencies did is did a number of programs, including residential rates, that incentivized transition to more recycling with lower rates for small cart sizes and higher rates to disincentivize solid waste for large cart sizes. And your efforts worked. You were able to divert almost 70% of your single-family solid waste by the year 2014 data. You're not done yet, though, with what you need to do. San Mateo County's climate action plan is actually calling for 75% of total diversion of all your solid waste by 2020. So, there'll be some additional efforts to attempt to accomplish that. In terms of the rate requirements, solid waste rates are in the same purview as water and sewer rates. Under Prop 218, the rates cannot exceed the cost of service overall. There's also a provision that rates cannot exceed the proportional cost of service to each parcel. Doesn't mean you have to do some detailed analysis for every single parcel, but they generally have to reflect the proportional cost of services for your different rate classes. And you're only supposed to use the revenues for the purposes for which they're collected. The understanding of Prop 218 has evolved over time through court cases, the most recent one being the San Juan Capistrano appellate court decision. This was a case about water rates. Roughly two-thirds, three-quarters of agencies in California have tiered residential water rates to encourage conservation. Historically, under Prop 218, that was considered legitimate as long as the rates for the different classes were roughly in alignment. You were okay, you were allowed to have tiered rates to support policy aims such as conservation or, in your solid waste side, encouragement to recycle more. However, this new case implied that, yes, tiered rates are okay, however, you have to have a reasonable cost justification to support them. Again, it was a case about water rates, but I think the shadow of this case falls over all sewer and solid waste rates, leading in to what the analysis that we have done. A little background, your existing solid waste rates highlighted in this table here, you have different charges for different cart sizes, from 20 gallons to 96 gallons. As you can see here, most of your customers are 32-gallon customers, that's about 60% of your residential, single-family residential customer base. And the rates escalate from the smaller cart sizes to the larger cart sizes. Commercial rates, you've got a wide variety of rates based on type and frequency of service that I'm not going to go into here. In terms of your existing rates, where do you stack up against the other South Bay Waste Management Authority, or I typically call Rethink Waste, member agency rates? And these rates I'm showing you on this chart here, they're not in any haphazard order, they're actually ordered lowest to highest by the 32-gallon cart, which is the most common size for virtually all these agencies. They all have similar accounts as you guys for the different cart sizes. So, you're right in the middle of the pack here. Moving on, to put it graphically, where your rates are against the other Rethink Waste agencies, you can see your red line for the different cart sizes compared to the other agencies. You're kind of in the middle of the pack for the smaller cart sizes. Your largest cart sizes are, tend to be lower. That's because you've already been taking proactive action to try to realign your residential rates with cost of service. So, what we did going forward was try to come up with, without getting into too much number detail, you know, kind of big picture, what can we do to justify the existing rates or identify where things need to change? Basically, there are three different types of costs that are looked at from Rethink Waste and Recology and the way your rates, what we're recommending here. One is your collection rates, the cost for the trucks and the drivers to go out there, pick up the waste, and deliver it to the Shoreline Environmental Center. That's the biggest chunk of costs that you have out there for solid waste. It's about $5.1 million in the current calendar year. And the way we allocated costs in our kind of preliminary study is Recology provides that detailed information for what the collection costs are for residential versus commercial. So, you've got good cost data there. Within residential, however, there's not a lot of good data. The one school of thought says, hey, wait a minute, the large cart should pay more than the small cart. But then again, as anyone in the industry will point out, it doesn't cost that much different to go out and send a truck and driver to pick up the waste from someone's curb, whether it's a 96-gallon, a cart or a 32-gallon cart, you still have to make that same effort. So, I know from looking at some of the data from Rethink Waste, they had assumed that it was equal for all accounts. However, everyone would recognize that if you have a larger cart size and you've got your trucks driving out there, they're going to fill up a lot quicker than if everyone had a 20-gallon cart size. So, there have to be more trips to serve those large customers. It's not a huge difference in the cost because they could just, you know, when they're filled up, they can turn around and drive right down to the Shoreway Environmental Center, which is located right here in San Carlos, dump the stuff, transition and get back out there and continue their routes. But there is a cost differential, so that's embedded in a small cost differential in the rates that we came up with. What we came up with, with, you know, again, kind of placeholder estimate, that 32-gallon container equals, you know, 100% of the cost of collection. The smaller cart size, 20-gallon container, 90% of the cost of that. And as you move up to the 64-gallon container, that's 110% of the charge, and for the largest cart size, 120% of the cart size. So, again, trying to recognize that there is some cost differential that's there. The next category is disposal costs. It's the next largest category, $1.9 million in 2015. Again, costs are allocated residential and commercial based on the actual cost of funding that waste from the Shoreway Environmental Center. And then, again, within residential, this time, we allocated the cost based on solid waste cart sizes, a reasonable proxy for the amount of waste that's being generated that you have to fund at Shoreway. The third element is city cost recovery, which is the smallest portion. All the Rethink member agencies submit to Rethink Waste what their costs are, and Rethink Waste factors those into their cost calculations. These are costs for anything from administration to street sweeping to franchise fees, costs that should be recovered from solid waste. There's no set way for doing this, no, you know, I won't say there's an industry standard. In our rate calculations, what we did is allocate those costs to residential versus commercial, single-family residential versus commercial, based on the measured volume of solid waste. Again, a lot of your efforts here in the city are going to be aimed at reducing waste, so certainly levying charges based on volume is a reasonable approach. It's not the only one out there. And then again, within the single-family cart sizes, we allocated those costs, again, based on volume of waste, which is represented by the cart size. So, the long and short of it, this kind of shows the numbers. Based on our cost allocations, it appears that your single-family customers are underpaying, not to the same extent as you may have seen in some other analyses, but they're allegedly underpaying by, you know, 25% or so from what they should be paying to recover the full cost of service. The flip side of the coin is the commercial, as you're aware, have been ostensibly overpaying. So, this new cost allocations would result in a reduction in the commercial rates of about 20%. And this shows it graphically. The blue section is what the revenues are from each customer class, and the red section, red, orange, yellow, what the cost of service are according to these cost allocations. Stepping down within the single-family rates, we did the same analysis, and it led to this chart here. The blue representing what your current rates are for the different cart sizes for the residential customers, the orange representing what the cost of service are based on the cost of service allocations that I hastily went over a second ago. And you can see, you've held back the rates, you've cut the rates on the 96- and 64-gallon customers, and, you know, now you've got them very close to where the cost of service implies they should be. It's really the smaller cart sizes that are most of your residential customers that, according to this analysis, should have their rates increased. And again, that's kind of balancing out what's happening on the commercial side. The thing I want to point out is, I mean, this would mean rate increases for a lot of the single-family residential customer base, nobody likes that. But it's a rate increase because you have intentionally given them a price break historically to encourage transition towards waste diversion and recycling. So, this is just bringing it up to where it could be under these new cost allocations. What are the alternatives? I mean, you could do nothing, obviously. I don't know if your city attorney would be comfortable with that. A few of the alternatives we thought of were, one, do a one-time transition to try to realign the rates with cost of service. Again, with no rate increase, overall, this is probably a fortuitous time to do that because you won't have a double whammy of a rate increase and a rate structure adjustment. Some other options could include phasing in to the realigned rates over a few years. The benefits of that are, you know, you're giving folks a little more time to react. However, again, under Prop 218, I don't know if your attorney would be comfortable with that because you ostensibly, according to the cost allocations, could be overcharging commercial customers now. Why not fix it rather than phase that out? However, you could help phase in the rates for the folks who are hardest hit by the rate structure transition by using some outside funds. Again, you've got a lot of demands on your general fund money, but you could use general funds to help transition the costs for residential customers. Then again, you've been giving these customers a break for a long time, and you continue to give them a break using general fund money that you might want to appropriate elsewhere. Another option would be your low-income discount program. This is a new program you have for your solid waste rates. You're currently offering customers a 10% discount. If you wanted to help out those who are the least economically, who can afford rate increases, you could opt to temporarily or permanently make an adjustment to your low-income discount program to help those folks during the transition. This is a program that's not being currently widely used by the folks who are eligible for it, so maybe even during your Prop 218 process, you could publicize the fact you've got this program out there and available for folks. That doesn't conclude everything. There's one more issue related to your rates. All the Rethink member agencies recover franchise fees from the solid waste enterprise by, you know, telling Rethink Waste how much should be recovered in the rates. This is very common throughout the state. The franchise fees range from about 3% to 13% of overall revenues. Your franchise fees that you recover are actually on the lower side at 5% where it's historically been. However, under Prop 218, the notion of franchise fees are legally questionable since they're not technically a strict cost of service. However, you are incurring a lot of costs as a city related to solid waste, whether it's public works department, legal, city manager, staffing time, you've got facilities, et cetera, solid waste diversion programs, you're going to need to keep moving on. So, our recommendation was replace what you're calling franchise fees with what the actual cost of service are, and include the full cost of service recovery in the solid waste rates, which can include everything, including, you know, a share of facility usage and things along those lines. So, the conclusion, your rates have helped achieve your solid waste diversion requirements. They're not in perfect alignment with cost of service based on the data that we've seen, new court rulings where the San Juan Capistrano case in particular kind of implies that your rates should be in alignment with cost of service, you shouldn't be overcharging anybody. The draft calculations imply, kind of provide you an indication of where the rates could go to get them back realigned with cost of service, larger increases for your typical single-family homes with 32-gallon or 20-gallon residential cart sizes, unfortunately. And the final thing is that, you know, change franchise fees and make it a real full cost of service recovery for the solid waste. Next steps are, you know, take any input we receive here as well as additional input from staff, come back to you at the end of October with some revised recommendations. Even the recommendations I'm presenting tonight have already been modified a little bit since the initial draft memo we put out there. And then, you'll have to go through your Prop 218 process to raise these rates. The goal is to get those notices out in time that you could have your new rates in effect on January 1st. And that concludes what I wanted to cover. Thank you. And open it up to, I think Jay has some concluding comments.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, we have another presentation, another portion of our item to move towards. And at this point in time, I'd like to ask Cliff Feldman, he's the Recycling Programs Manager for Rethink Waste, to come up and make a presentation. Cliff's here with Kevin McCarthy, the Executive Director. And as well, I forgot to mention, but we have staff from Recology here, too, so as there might be questions about the revenue requirement or information that our waste collection contractor might be able to answer, they're here as well. So, I'll ask Cliff to come up.
Good evening, Mayor Collins, Members of the Council. My name is Cliff Feldman, Recycling Programs Manager with Rethink Waste. I've been asked to give a brief presentation on commercial recycling, and I'll try to make it brief given the late hour. The rules and responsibilities related to commercial recycling are very much a shared responsibility between the city, Rethink Waste, Joint Powers Agency, and Recology. The city is required to comply with state mandates, including AB 939, AB 341, which is a statewide mandatory commercial recycling law. And in addition, there's a new law going into effect next year called AB 1826, which requires commercial accounts that generate organics to recycle. In addition, the city adopted its own mandatory ordinance back in 2010, and strides have been made along those lines. Regarding the Rethink Waste or the South Bay Side Waste Management Authority, we provide guidance to our agencies regarding best practices on commercial recycling. We review the activities that are occurring throughout the service area. We oversee the contract with Recology, and we generally provide assistance in significantly in the form of public education and outreach, which then Recology uses in order to provide technical assistance through their sales team. And in addition, we provide assistance ensuring compliance with the state mandates previously mentioned. So, related to Recology, they have a sales team of nine people. For the entire service area, for the dozen franchise agreements, the annual cost of this sales team is approximately $950,000 annually. And again, we provide the public education and outreach and assistance. And again, we provide the public education and outreach and assistance to that sales force to go out, provide assistance, technical assistance to businesses, and to really increase commercial diversion, which about two-thirds of disposal throughout a service area is still commercial solid waste. So that's certainly the ripest area to continue increasing diversion. In 2014, San Carlos's diversion rate for commercial and multifamily was approximately 30%, and across the service area for all of SBWMA was around 31%. In addition, our Board of Directors in last October passed an ordinance requiring independent recycling haulers to report on the amount of recycling that they haul throughout our service area. This provides us the gateway to obtain previously, data that we could never obtain previously because the only information we had related to commercial recycling was through our franchised hauler, Recology. So what this ordinance does is allows us to now obtain the independent recycling data from numerous types of businesses, whether a business is self-hauling material back to a distribution facility, or a hauler is independently recycling it and selling the materials themselves. So we're currently working through a large list of businesses. We have about 30 registered service area-wide. There are two businesses with San Carlos addresses, and I'm working with about 10 or so others to get them to register and to begin complying. So some numbers related to specifically diversion, I'm not going to get into the, this chart in too much depth, but from 2010 to 2011, commercial diversion increased about 3.5%, which, which was primarily the result of the new services being rolled out, which, which were handled by Recology. From 11 to 12, it was 1.6%, 13, it was 1.5%, and from 13 to 14, diversion increased, again for this sector, about 1.5%. The total measure diversion, and I must, must point out, this includes residential as well, had a similar trajectory. At the rollout of the new services in 2011, overall diversion in San Carlos increased about 5.5%. In 12, it was 1.7%. In 13, it was 0.3%, and in 14, it retreated a little bit by 2/10 of a percentage point. So what this chart represents is the city's compliance with Assembly Bill 939, which is the 50% diversion mandate by 2000. And I'll just point out that in prior years leading up to now, the city has complied on the numerical side of compliance with AB 939. However, last year was the first time that the disposal target was not reached. So what this chart is depicting is the amount of disposal by residents, the columns in blue, and in green, a per-employee disposal amount, because that's how the state calculates numerical compliance with AB 939. But I also can happily point out that the city's annual report for last year was accepted because more emphasis is placed on the programs in place and the city's diligence and efforts in implementing the programs, and less emphasis is placed on the numerical compliance as far as the state is concerned. So, and one other thing I just want to point out is, San Carlos has been very close to these targets. And unfortunately, as a, as a host city of a transfer station, San Carlos will always get more than its fair share of disposal, just it's the inherent with host facilities that have transfer stations in their jurisdiction. So San Carlos is much closer along these targets than other cities, and it is predominantly related to the disposal at the transfer station. So with that, happily ask any questions. Answer questions.
Robert, you're up.
I don't have one for Cliff, but I do have one for Jay. In the staff report on page three, relative to the 2015 rates, we're short on the 64-gallon, $8.09, and 96-gallon, we're short $20.71, it says.
I see where you're at that.
Yeah, when Alex gave his report, which I like a lot better, it appears that we are not at all, we're actually ahead of the game on each one of those. So.
So my suggestion would be, we'll let Alex explain.
Okay.
Because his analysis was a little different than just simply what we took from our SBWMA analysis.
And I'm not criticizing who they want, I just want to, I like his because that means we don't have to move as much stuff around, so.
Understand.
I don't know whether the city attorney likes it, but I love it, so.
Okay.
But I don't need to have it explained, I just want to understand, can I use this? Okay, good. That's all I want to know, because then I don't have to move, we don't have to cut $5, and $10, and $15 off these damn darn rates anymore, according to this. Right, Mr. City Attorney?
That's the way it appears to me as well.
Thank you. Have a mind.
Okay.
That's all, I just, just wanted to make sure I could do it.
Okay, so if, Ed, if I could get you to close this presentation, minimize this presentation, just in case there might be some questions on it, and then go back to the original presentation where I just finish that up, and, and then give council the opportunity to sort of go all over the field and, and ask.
Sorry, I thought.
It's okay, and ask more questions, there's really, there's not.
I'm just waiting for him to get that straightened out, and we'll move on.
There's not a lot more, at least from me, and then we want to get back to where, what we need to hear from you guys.
Well, don't go away, because Mark may have a question for you. Mark?
No, not, not, no, right, but I just have one more slide, let me get through that, and then I'd be happy to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I thought you were finished.
Not quite.
Can you please?
So, so as, as it relates to next steps, we're going to need direction from you at the October 26th meeting on what are we going to do as it relates to the rates for 2016? So between now and then, with Alex's help and SBWMA's help, we're going to be developing alternatives that you, you tell us you want to see back at that October 26th meeting. That way then, there can be more detailed analysis and kind of more exact numbers for whatever approach that we want to take, especially as it relates to, do we want to do it all at one time, to make up the difference, you know, or solve the deficit and surplus problems within commercial residential and within residential itself? Or do we want to phase that in, or what, what approach do we want to take? And then we'll send out the Prop 218, Prop 218 hearing notice, which then, it looks like we'll be scheduling that first meeting in January for that Prop 218 hearing where we'll have notified the, all the residents, and they'll have their opportunity to come and express their concerns or their support to you at the city council. And then we'll have those rates effective in February, which is just in time for our first billing cycle. So that's kind of where we are tonight, and so as it relates to questions and things that you'd like us to pursue further in the analysis, we'll be using Alex to do that. If you have questions or comments on the recycling, the recycling status so far that Cliff may be able to answer, but we're kind of looking for feedback now and direction for that October 26th meeting.
Okay, thanks. Now, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I only had one question, Jay, until you put that last slide up, and now I have 20. No, I'm just kidding. And actually, before I ask my question, I wanted to congratulate Kevin on his application to become Speaker of the House of Representatives.
That's right.
I hope we still get to work with you after you ascend to the purple. My question actually is that, it kind of relates tangentially to the question Bob asked. The analysis that was done about the cost versus billings on the various cart sizes, just out of curiosity, was a presumption made that, that people who are paying for a 96-gallon cart, for example, actually pretty much fill it up? Or did you actually look at actual data on?
Well, you know, in both Rethink Waste's initial analysis and our analysis, the, the assumption was that each of the carts is filled to an equal percentage of capacity. So in essence, yes, maybe they're all 90%, more, all 100%. But pretty much the answer to your question is yes. The cart size represents the amount of waste that's in it.
For what it's worth, anecdotally, I actually don't think that that's correct. I think that there's a bias, the larger carts tend to actually be less filled. And that can, that can obviously cause, that can make there being a bigger gap between the cost and the, the revenue than your analysis would otherwise indicate, because you're assuming that people are, that the truck has to go back more often to the dump station.
Right, I made a small assumption of that, trying to be recognizing the fact that, yeah, but you're right, yes.
That's fine. I am, I mean, I'm glad to see that your analysis shows that we can point to that saying that we don't have too much further to go, if any further at all, on, on the adjustments. I do have actually some specific guidance that I would like to give, propose that we give to staff, but I think we're still in the Q and A section, is that correct, Mr. Mayor? So I'll hold off on that. Okay, thank you.
Matt?
So the question I had, I'm trying to understand, I'm looking at the chart that you gave us that was blue and orange. And what doesn't make sense to me is, I'm looking at that, and it looks like we're recovering our costs on the 96 and almost on the 64, and then we're, on the other two, we're kind of losing money. But yet, our overall report is that we're, we're fine, our, our revenues to cost of providing service and the whole thing, that we're fine. Is that because the commercial is making up for that?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
The two charts. Look at them together, yeah.
Getting the lateness of the hour, I don't want to go too much further on that. And then I also wanted to understand this court case and everything. So the concern, because we've made these adjustments like to the 96-gallon, they're not paying more than the cost of service, so we're fine with the rates there according to Prop 218. But where we're not fine is that, again, commercial is paying more than they ought to be, because they're paying more than it actually costs, than the cost of service. Is that right? Do I have that right?
That's correct, that's exactly what the analysis indicates.
All right, thank you.
Oh, you had your line up?
Two questions.
I only have one question, and I, maybe this is for you, Alex. I've always wondered this, if we raised the rates so that we had absolute cost of recovery, would it change anybody's behavior? Would some people say, oh, well, the rates went up, I'm going to use a different size? And could we then end up in imbalance again?
You know, it's hard to say, because you don't want, if you made everyone pay the same rate, whether they're a small cart, would they start dumping more in there? I mean, I think the financial incentive certainly helps, and I think there was some analysis done on your, your own solid waste rates and diversion, they found that did have an impact, and so I'd have to think it has some impact, maybe not on everybody, but certainly on, on some folks. But that would be my guess.
Then again, Mr. Mayor, there, there are lazy people like me who always paid for a cart bigger than he needed, because the few times a year when he had to throw out a lot of stuff, he always hated dealing with that.
All right. I have no speaker cards, is there any member from the public who would like to speak? I see your light on, that's what I see.
So I guess we're in the, the direction area where I think Mr. Olbert had something to, and I had, I had some comment, just a quasi-question comment. Let's assume we raised the 20-gallon 10%, and the 32-gallon 10%, it'd be like $2 to $3. And you did the math, times 12, times the number of carts, et cetera, et cetera, comes out to ballpark around $239,000, $240,000. That's like money here. Then we have the $379,000 surplus. Can we take both those, add them together, and apply it to the commercial $922,000, lowering that $600,000? Lowering it to about $300,000 then? Sorry, there's a lot of numbers there.
That's okay. That, I think that is, on one hand, we don't, we, we have kind of taken the approach that we don't really count on the surplus to be something that's used on an annual basis every year to help reduce our rates or, or offset those costs, because we can never really be sure about how that finally reconciles itself. So I guess yes, from the standpoint of the math, that would work out.
So if you took only, let's say, half of it, instead of, you know, instead of $379, you took 180, I mean, you know, some of it, because it looks pretty reasonable that you're going to have something there after two big monster years. In other words, but I guess the concept is, you can take whatever we want, if we, if we want, we can take some of that money, if we raise the rates, take that money and apply it to the, to the overage of the commercial. In other words, to lower that. In other words, raising the rates and using some surplus, thereby getting, trying to get more in balance. It's the theory more than the dollars.
It's, it's the theory. But again, we have, we always have to be, we would be responsible for what the final reconciliation is and all that, so, so it's, again, my caution is simply that we, we would, we would be, we would be wanting to kind of hold that separate from the decisions that we make, I think, to a degree that doesn't make us rely on having a surplus so that we can use that after each year goes by.
Okay, let me separate it then, I'll ask again, I apologize. If I, if I raise the rates, can I take all that money and put it toward the commercial? If I raise the residential rates?
Yes.
Okay, but you're concerned, and I'm very conservative, I understand, using any of that surplus, I'm not quite as concerned about using a ton of it, but okay. But basically, that's, that's a theory that I would have, I'm not saying it's 10%, but whatever monies we would do, we'd be able to attack that $922,000 and, and get that a lot lower.
Well, and that's, and that's what we want to have the analysis do as we get you, get ready for our recommendations on the, at the October meeting, so we can give you more exact numbers and where the money could potentially come from.
That's some, that's a theory that you could, we could do.
We can look at that.
Okay.
Okay, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, first, I'm going to ask that we extend our meeting to, since we have both this item and one other item, to 10:45?
This is the last item.
I thought we had Matt's, Matt's item that he, we pulled off.
Oh, a second.
All right. We need a roll call for this? Okay?
Yes, Councilmember Griselli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot.
No, and in fact, I am going to leave at 10:30.
Councilmember, oops. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Okay. Interestingly enough, Bob, I was going, I came at it a different way, but I was going to suggest something that sounds pretty similar to yours, your suggestion. The direction I'd like to give staff is, I'd like to see us use, see what would happen if we used basically all of the anticipated surplus, and I'll come back to why all is okay in my mind in this case, plus see what we would need to do in raising residential rates so that we could basically address two-thirds, the target would be two-thirds of the commercial subsidy in the next year. And the reason why I'm willing to modify our pre-existing sort of protocol on not relying on surpluses that we don't know whether we're going to have, is in my mind, that's certainly a risk, but what we're talking about here is balancing a whole bunch of different risks. I mean, there's the risk that we could be sued by somebody, there's the risk that we could be sued by somebody else for a different reason, there's a risk the surpluses might not come together, whatever it is. I think to the extent that we can make us, we have the opportunity because of the way the cost situation that Recology and SBR has played out this year, I'd like to take advantage of it as much as we can. Yes, that does kick the problem down the road a little bit if the surplus doesn't turn out to actually occur, but then we'll deal with that next year. So that's, that's one option I'd like to see staff come back with, address two-thirds of the problem, see, and show me what that's going to look like.
All right, Cameron?
Yeah, I mean, I just concur, I think Mark's framework sounds about right to me, and I would generally like to take a phased approach if we can, and, and use any surplus we can to help kind of more realign the rates.
It happens rarely, Bob, but accidentally we agree.
Yeah, same numbers.
All right. So where are we? Is that, I guess that's the direction?
Wes?
I concur with Councilmember Olbert and Councilmember Collins.
That's, yeah, that's good direction for us.
Okay.
And, and I know that, you know, as Alex has been working on this, we're, we'll have some other options to present to you, but those ones in particular we'll bring forward and have some more detailed discussion on at the October meeting.
Through the chair, I didn't mean to restrain staff from bringing up whatever other clever ideas you have, as long as you address that one, so.
And I guess one other thing is, I just would like there to be some analysis of the legal risk of whatever choices we have.
Through the chair, could we take 7H?
I was going to suggest that, 7H. Adopt a resolution amending Appendix A of the Management Group Salary and Benefit
So that has to do with the, the assistant city manager is left off, is said to be a typo. Currently, we have an assistant to the city manager. My feeling on it would be just to leave it off, it's not a position we have currently. If a future council wants to create that position, which we agreed with the city manager when he brought it to us to take away, then...
when he brought it to us to take away, then they can do it at the time. Mr. Olbert said earlier, you know, about the, very little that we do is set in stone, and if the position's needed in the future, let a future council decide that. But we decided to go along with the city manager's recommendation to not have that position, and I don't, I, I'm just a little concerned about going ahead and putting it in there, and then down the road, we end up with not only an assistant city manager, or an assistant to the city manager, but also an assistant city manager. And I just think we should have one or the other, and, and what's on the list is fine for right now, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve 7H.
A second.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yes, through the chair, just a question for, for Mr. Rubens or Mr. Malpe. Would it, what Matt's talking about, would it be possible to, if the council was willing to amend the motion here to delete that, that entry from the schedule, or does that require the whole thing be brought back?
Well, if I can clarify, it's been a number of years since this came up, so I can, I can understand, you know, how memory changes over time. But the, the action that the council took very specifically was not to eliminate the assistant city manager position. In fact, the assistant city manager position's always been carried in the budget. What we did specifically was underfill it with an assistant to position, which you all created, so there's no, the council budget control wouldn't allow me to fill both positions at the same time without coming to you and specifically asking for another position allocation. But I have the ability to, even today, to fill the assistant city manager position, you know, even despite the fact that it's not appearing on the salary and benefit resolution, because it still appears on an older version, and so it's a clerical typo. I don't want to create that confusion, so, you know, down the road, I, I couldn't fill both positions without coming to council, but it is my intention to promote the assistant to the city manager to the assistant city manager this year, which is consistent with my plan. But before I do that, I wanted to make sure that this was clear and, and this error was corrected.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Yvette?
Councilmember Grisilli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott.
No.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes, I'm with that.
Can I make a brief announcement?
Yes.
Sorry. Apologize, I meant to bring this up under council communications, I just wanted to let my colleagues know that I'm not going to be able to attend the next council meeting due to some travel for work.
Okay. All right. Thank you, and good night all, meeting adjourned.